Good evening, and welcome to tonight's public hearing on the FY 2015 approved budget. On behalf of the school board members, I would like to thank all of you for taking time this evening to come and talk to us about the budget. The Board will hold a public budget work session this Thursday, May 15th, starting at 7:00 PM right here at Luther Jackson Middle School. The session will be televised, and you are welcome to come listen to the Board's discussion. If you have not already done so, please provide your written comments to a staff member in the front lobby, and please turn off or silence your cellphones. Tonight, we have 79 speakers. Each speaker is allotted three minutes, and to be respectful of everyone, we ask that you stay within that time limit. The deputy clerk will start the timer when you begin to speak, and you will be able to see the time remaining on the clock on the podium. The buzzer will sound at the conclusion of your three minutes. Three names and their speaker numbers will be announced at a time. When you hear your name and speaker number, please move closer to the front of the auditorium so you will be ready when it is your turn to speak. If speakers are not here when their name is called, those names will be called again at a later time. If you have not registered to speak tonight, but would like an opportunity to address the Board, please see the staff member at the entrance of the auditorium to sign up for one of the five reserved speaker slots. Your name will be called after registered speakers. Also, there will be an opportunity for individuals to speak if there are no-show speaker slots remaining at the end of the hearing. After all the registered speakers have addressed the Board, I will announce whether there are any no-show slots available. For this, we ask that you state your full name at the time you speak. After you have spoken, please the deputy clerk so that she may collect your contact information for the record. Throughout the evening, you may notice school board members leaving the table at times, but they will have access to a TV that is broadcasting the public hearing in the back. I will be calling first 25 speakers, and then I will turn over the list to our Budget Committee Chair, Mr. Ted Velkov, and he's going to go through the next set of 25 speakers, and then Perry Reed, who is the Vice Chair of Budget Committee, will do the next set of 25, and eventually come back to me. There are a couple of Board members who are not here yet. I'm expecting Mr. Stork to be here in about 15 minutes, and both Superintendent Dr. Garza and Kathy Smith, solidity six school board member in Washington DC, attending Teacher of the Year event sponsored by Washington Post, and they'll be joining us later this evening. Instead of Dr. Garza, we have a Deputy Superintendent. Thank you, Mr. Parrish, this evening. With that, let me call the my set of speakers, starting with the number one, Ruth Sangree, to be followed by number two, Elizabeth McKeon, and number three, Jennifer Horowitz.
My name is actually Meg Hashem. I was Speaker Number Eight, and Ruth will now be Speaker Number Eight in my stead. All right. School Board Members and fellow Fairfax County citizens, I am here today to talk about the recent decision by the McClain Administration to cut the Madrigals and Armonia Choirs. I don't have any songs to sing or petitions to show off, but I do know how important the choirs and our conductor, Ms. Martin, are to McClain. Graduates from the McClain Madrigals have gone on to performance stages all across the world. Not only that, just this March, Madrigals were invited to perform at Carnegie Hall in the upcoming year. I will not be a member of Madrigals then, but hearing that announcement filled me with such immense pride that I didn't care. Likewise, I was written to by two former alumni who wished to share their sentiments. Paul Roos, class of 2010, number-one tenor in the state in 2010, and current member of the a cappella group The Hullabahous, featured in the film Pitch Perfect, wrote, "McClain Madrigals did not only teach me how to sing well. I became a proficient vocalist, but I also became a comfortable performer and public speaker, a leader, a more confident individual. It also helped me learn the most important lessons I took from high school: how to be self-driven, how to be a team player, and how work has the potential to be fun if you pursue the things that interest you." Essentially, everything else of consequence that I have done with my life have been dependent on my experiences with the McClain Madrigals. Gila Erdmusa, class of 2009 and Boston Conservatory graduate, currently performing in her own one-woman opera, wrote to me saying, "McClain Choir gave me a home during my high school years. My parents divorced the year I entered McClain, and the brokenness that resulted colored the next four years. During this time, the choir department gave me attention, care, and opportunity for emotional expression that I craved. Madrigals was the only thing that I was excited about. It gave me the opportunity to learn about art, musicality, hard work, attention to detail, friendship. I have no doubt that where I am, on both a personal and a professional level, can be credited to the comprehensive education and attention I received from the choir department and Ms. Martin. The hours I spent in women's choir, Madrigals, AP Music Theory, as a part of the many musicals and as a TA, prepared me to become the artist and musician I am today. Personally, when I first entered Women's Chorus freshman year, I was suffering from severe depression and thought of myself as worthless. As that year passed, Ms. Martin helped me discover that I did have talent, and I had potential to grow and become better. She showed me that I did have worth, and that my life and personage had worth. That day, May of 2011, when I walked down the hallway to see that I'd made Madrigals was one of the happiest moments of my life, because in that moment, I felt like I had finally found my place, and that I had something that made me a unique and worthwhile person. Madrigals made me a better person. This is the common thought that links Madrigals past and present. Without being in Madrigals, I guarantee you I would have never had the confidence to become the person I am today, and I'm asking you, please, to reconsider, to talk to our Administration, so the child that was like me... Sorry, but yeah.
Thank you. The next speaker is Elizabeth McKeon, to be followed by Jennifer Horowitz, and then Taj Rauj.
Good evening. As mentioned, my name is Elizabeth McKeon, and I'm a member of Project Enlightenment, McClain High School's Living History Society, in which we go to various locations around the DC area and reenact history and tell people about our founding fathers and educate students, elderly men and women, anyone of every age, and it is a very unique program found only at my high school. And for the past three years, McClain High School has been fortunate enough to host Project Enlightenment as a credited course based on a 16-year extracurricular program, but it has become evident to me that the budget cut has affected decisions at the highest level and subsequently harmed my program. I wish you to finalize your decision with accurate and comprehensive understanding of the ramifications your decisions have upon student life and our larger community. For nearly 20 years, Project Enlightenment dedicated untold hours of education and preservation to the historic locations at Harmok, Northern Virginia, and DC. I alone have given at least 35 hours of community service via Project Enlightenment this year, and the reward is both for myself as a student and those who visit the museum hosting our group. But I was only able to give such time and energy because I felt liberated by the independent classroom environment that is this Living History in Class. From my current understanding, Administration is at liberty to make cuts wherever it can as long as the numbers work, but you aren't just dealing with numbers. You are dealing with people, teachers, high schoolers, museum caretakers, docents, the thousands of people whose lives have been touched in some way or another by the education philosophy perpetuated by Living History. But we were cut. I was told we were cut because we could not get the numbers. I was told the decision was necessary for de-staffing, but I don't see a decision. I see well-intended but ill-conceived mandates for such classes as personal finance and as many APs as possible while suffocating those courses which actually make a difference in students' lives. Please understand me. I love my AP teachers, but Project Enlightenment has been my definitive and vital high school endeavor. I have given you affidavits, letters, and news articles of the merits of Project Enlightenment to which I ask you to read and understand the impact this community has created. The last page, please notice, is my letter of acceptance to Stanford University with a handwritten note from my admissions counselor acknowledging my participation in historical volunteering as being what convinced them to include me in their 5.07% acceptance rate. And I hate to play the numbers and names game, but it seems as if that's what this Administration will listen to. You are cutting the ideal. You are cutting unique and revolutionary programs. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jennifer Horowitz, to be followed by Taj Rauj and Shivani Gupta. Number three, Jennifer Horowitz. Number four, Taj Rauj. Number five, Shivani Gupta. Number six, Marie Beranaki. Must be the traffic. Nancy Pruitt is number seven, to be followed by Ruth Sangree, now number eight. Number nine, Nikki Lee.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Pruitt, and I am a senior at McClain High School. I am also a third-year member and vice president of the Madrigal Choir at McClain, which is in danger of being cut or drastically altered next year. Because a Madrigal Choir is only supposed to have 12 to 18 people, the 31.5 student class size and the 20 student minimums are causing the Madrigal Choir to be combined with the Advanced Women's Choir, which would dilute the choir's Renaissance theme and cause a massive imbalance of male and female voices. This year and for many years before, the Madrigal class has been offered as an eighth-period course. This has allowed us to also participate in one of men's, women's, or advanced women's choirs during the day. In these classes, we learn singing technique and music theory. We also get the opportunity to lead sectionals and warm-ups, which is a fantastic leadership experience. The economics and personal finance requirement has dealt a huge blow to elective classes' enrollments. As it was, I had to take summer school for two years in order to take both theater and choir for four years, and I didn't have the econ requirement. Therefore, it would be impossible for most Madrigal students to take two choir classes during the school day, and the Madrigals' presence in the learning choirs is imperative to the development of the Madrigal singers, the newer singers, and the choral program as a whole. If the economics requirement is truly necessary, maybe we can figure out a way to make it easier on kids' schedules. Although I know several students who took it online, this is not a viable option for some who cannot afford an extra $700 course. Every student who takes econ during the day comes out of places like chorus, AP European History, Advanced PE, Living History, or Psychology and Sociology, all of which have been cut from next year due to a low enrollment. Students cannot get through the day without a class they love to reduce their stress and motivate them to continue. This fall, I will be attending Davidson College on a partial music scholarship. The 15 Fine Arts credits I will graduate with are what have kept me going on rough days and contributed greatly to my success in eight AP classes, including Music Theory and a dual enrollment college math class, Multi-Variable Calculus, and Matrix Algebra. I have had some of the best teachers here that exist in the world. They have taught me to love learning. I would be able to take all of their classes, then take AP tests and a few classes for free. This idea that the tests at the end of the year are more important than the learning all through the year is what is wrong with our school system. The money we can scrape together belongs with the students and teachers, not in the testing room with machine-graded questions and formulaic essays. Choir is about connecting to people. That's what school systems are about: the students and the teachers who shape them as they grow. In a school system such as ours, with teachers who break the mold and students learning from them, I am confident that we can save programs such as McClain's Choir and continue to change the lives of the children who come next. Thank you.
Next, we have Ruth Sangree, to be followed by Nikki Lee, and then number 10, Kayla Weisum.
Good evening, Members of the Board. My name is Ruth Sangree, and I was originally speaking in spot one. How do we fill in this spot? So to begin, I, like so many of my colleagues, am a student at McClain High School, but I actually grew up in far west Texas, in El Paso, which you guys may have heard of, is in fact one of the poorest counties in the country. In my years there, I thought I was getting a good education. I got straight A's. I enjoyed myself, but then I came to McClain and realized just how wrong I had been. Because the opportunities I was given at this school are incredible, things such as Living History, a program I did not even know exists, has incredibly benefited my time here. Teachers who would take the time to stay after school with me in subjects I did not understand and wouldn't just give me an A because I wanted it, they did it because I deserved it. So when I found out about the budget cuts, needless to say, I was shocked, because just walking out the door of my school, I look across the street and I see a two-bedroom, one-story house that costs upwards in the millions of dollars. This is no accident. My parents are parents. The businesses and the income that come with them came for the schools. Please do not take this for granted. We don't take for granted the education that we have been given.
Number nine, Nikki Lee, to be followed by Kayla Weisum, and then Jamie Starr. Nikki? Kayla Weisum? After Kayla, we have Jamie Starr, to be followed by Kareem Dumar.
Hi, my name is Kayla. As an almost senior at McClain High School, I'm truly saddened by the condition in which I will be leaving my high school. When I leave high school, I will carry many memories, some of which include producing the morning news show, going to New York City for a fashion marketing trip, and going to California to compete in a national business competition. All of these experiences came because of my elective classes. That's not to say I won't have any memories from my core classes. Of course, I'll remember staying up all night studying for my chemistry, geometry, and history tests. I can't tell you that I remember all the material, but I can assure you I'll remember the stress. High school is stressful, and at this point, that's become a fact. Between trying to pass our core classes and getting fives on our AP exams, it's hard to find what our passions are when we're staying up all night studying. However, elective classes allow students the opportunity to try new things, discover what they like and don't like, and learn about themselves. For many students, electives are the reasons why they come to school, why they want to try harder in core classes, and the influence for their future careers. If I didn't try fashion marketing my freshman year, I would have never known how much of an interest I have in business. I started out with fashion marketing, then moved on to Marketing One, then on to Global Marketing, and now I'm planning on taking Advanced Marketing next year. Because I love the curriculum so much, I chose to challenge myself and take AP Economics. And since I still love it after AP Econ, I plan to take Statistics and Accounting next year. My point is not to bore you on my fascination with the business world. My point is to show the connection between electives and passions. If it wasn't for my electives, I would have not known how much of an interest I have in business. My physics class, my geometry class, and my history class did not incite that interest in me. My electives did. For many students, electives are the classes where they can explore their passions. All along, I thought high school was supposed to be the place where students would find out what they love and then be prepared for it to go on to college and learn more about it, not just preparing us to get As on all our tests. I want the students who come to school after me to experience what I have experienced with my electives, whether like art, performing arts, or technology. It is my fear that with these bad budget times, elective classes will be at risk. They are far too important and make too much of an impact to be taken away. So I hope that while you're making your deliberations, you keep electives in mind. Thank you.
Those speakers who have arrived after I made initial announcement at the beginning of public hearing, if you are speaking tonight and have not turned in, have not given your copies of your remarks to one of our school board staff, please do so. You should be able to find them at the front entrance of the auditorium. With that, let me go to speaker number 11, Jamie Starr, to be followed by Kareem Dumar and Aidan Behringer.
Hello. My name is Jamie Starr, and I am a junior at McClain High School. I have also been a dedicated member of the McClain Choral Department since day one of my freshman year, a department now facing debilitating cuts for next year. I truly cannot overstate the impact this department has had on my life. Choir has given me the assertiveness to succeed in debate, where I'm a varsity debater recently qualified for a national tournament. It has given me the confidence to actively participate in all of my classes and share my ideas. It has given me poise that has been invaluable in interviews for summer internships and jobs. It has taught me the meaning of integrity, leadership, responsibility, passion, and teamwork. To be quite frank, I believe I have learned more essential life skills in three years of choir than I have in 11 years of math and science. Unfortunately, due to a lack of adequate funding, it has been determined that McClain can no longer support classes with fewer than 20 people enrolled. As a result, our director has been de-staffed to a part-time position, and the number of choirs offered has been cut in half for next year. The problem here is that chorus has never been about the numbers. In fact, our top choir, the Madrigals, which I am a member of, is by definition only supposed to have 12 to 18 singers. Chorus is about giving those select, passionate, and dedicated students the music, the art, the development of critical thinking and social skills, and the self-confidence that comes with singing in an elite choir. And we as individuals are not the only beneficiaries. The chorus has provided endless opportunities for entertainment and cultural enrichment for the school and the entire community. The changes proposed for McClain Chorus will stifle many of those benefits and will most likely permanently impair the department. Cutting the classes that incentivize students to continue with choir will lead to even less participation, and the vicious cycle of cuts will only continue. Choir is only one of many valuable arts departments facing future cuts due to budget concerns. It is important to understand that my fellow students and I are not just the future, we are the now. Depriving us the opportunity to fully pursue our interests because of monetary issues goes directly against one of FCPS's fundamental beliefs that, and I quote, "Each student is entitled to an excellent education that meets their individual needs." I recognize that financial difficulties are very real, but I have to believe that in such a renowned and resourceful county as ours, there is a reasonable and rational solution to this issue. We at McClain High School have just begun a collaborative dialogue between the Administration, parents, and students to prevent crippling our choir department. I hope you, our school board members, will do everything you can to help make that process a success. I believe that we are at a tipping point. Cutting the McClain Choral Department is only the first step in a slippery slope of disappearing arts programs. Please, do not force my school or any other school into making difficult decisions to cut these meaningful programs for me and for all future generations of students. Thank you.
Kareem Dumar, followed by Aidan Behringer and Matthew Howard. Number 12, Kareem Dumar. Number 13, Aidan Behringer. Number 14, Matthew Howard. Number 15, Wolf Gleek. Number 16, Emily Robinson. Emily? Thank you. To be followed by Alex Glassman and Joshua Wyder.
Good evening. With over 40,000 students in Fairfax County taking part in the Performing Arts Department, it is shocking that a woman who has been such an active and vocal advocate for those students would be deemed partially unnecessary. Last fiscal year, in spite of the unstable state of the national economy, a proposal was pushed forth by a member of this Board to allocate nearly $2 million to funding astroturf fields throughout the county. Several years ago, another proposal to allow smart boards in every classroom costing roughly $12 million was approved. The program is, for want of kinder words, a resounding failure. Those misplaced $14 million could comfortably pay Ms. Bounds's salary, along with all of the other teachers who are being de-staffed this coming school year. Instead of keeping a valuable member of Fairfax County employed, however, we have in her place glorified projectors and extra green grass on the football fields. Rather than attacking the financial mismanagement of this Board, however, I will sing the praises for Ms. Bounds. Having lived in and attended schools in four different schooling systems on three different continents, never have I ever encountered someone so valuable and so in love with their job. It is also exceedingly rare for a group of students to know the name of an administrator. At my own high school, half of the students I've spoken to can't name all of our own administrators, and yet with extreme volume and appreciation, if you walk down to the black box at the McClain High School Theater Company, they will know who Ms. Bounds is, and they will sing her praises as I am today. And it's the same story at the Langley High School Theater Company, and the students at the West Springfield Theater Company, and Lake Braddock Secondary School, and Herndon High School, and Edison High School. The list goes on and on and on. Any county would be lucky to have a performing arts administrator as wonderful as ours, and yet the decision has been made to thoroughly underutilize her. Ms. Bounds was a co-founder of the Cappies Critics and Awards Program, which is now an international program bringing much-needed attention to all areas of theater, including technical theater and theater criticism. Every year, hundreds of students and their administrators descend upon the Kennedy Center for a night of awards and recognition for an underappreciated group of teachers and students. That massive event is hosted by none other than Fairfax County's Judy Bounds. What is incomprehensible to me and the many students who like me is that arts and academics were the first cuts to be made. At McClain, not only are we dismantling our chorus program, but we're also losing two advanced placement classes. And an incredibly unique program, a history program, while little to no cuts have been made to athletics or administrative costs. What scares me the most is the lack of transparency. Next year, I'm slated to take six APs, and I don't want to show up knowing that half those classes aren't available anymore. What I'm asking of this Board is simple: restore Judy Bounds to her full-time position and allow 30% of Fairfax County students to continue to have a voice. I also ask this: at what point does a football field become more important than academics?
Next speaker is number 17, Alex Glassman, to be followed by Joshua Wyder, and then Caitlin Schenbert. Number 17, Alex Glassman. Number 18, Joshua Wyder.
Hello. So, as you probably can guess, another one talking about arts. It's an ongoing trend. I'm Joshua Wyder, a senior at WT Woodson High School. I'm saddened but not shocked in the slightest to hear that the Fine Arts Theater and Dance Specialist position for FCPS was reduced to part-time for the next year. This has been a recent trend in adding additional academic courses and requirements to the diplomas issued to graduating students, thus restricting the amount of students who can take classes in theater and dance. While some people view this as a step to forward education, as you can guess because I'm standing here, I don't. FCPS is known as one of the best school systems in the country. This is not only due to a high academic record, but also for a well-rounded curriculum, including a full range of arts courses. Moving the Fine Arts Theater and Dance Specialist position is the beginning of what I fear of if you give a mouse a cookie trend. I don't know if you're familiar with the book, "If You Give a Mouse a Cookie, Then He's Going to Want Lemonade, Then He's Going to Want More," but instead of giving the mouse a cookie, we're taking away the cookie. So I feel like today, we'll be moving that position to part-time, tomorrow, moving theater teachers' positions to part-time, with an eventual elimination of the theater curriculum for Fairfax County Public Schools. Not only will the elimination of these positions be detrimental to people like me, as I'm pursuing a career in acting, but it will also affect those who take theater classes who aren't going into the business. In my theater arts class, things such as public speaking, collaboration, and memorization are taught, skills that are applicable to any field. I know we're here tonight to discuss one position. However, I want to reiterate my fear that the reduction of this one position could lead to many more cuts down the road, which will negatively affect the future and the potential well-being of the students of Fairfax County Public Schools. Now, I've always struggled through school. I was one who, at the beginning, I've had case managers, I've had great accommodations along the way, but I've struggled with ADD, I have some processing problems, and just getting through the day, getting through the school day was just so hard for me. And the one light in my day was going to drama class, and the one thing that motivated me was going to drama class. And as the years went on, I was able to get my grades up. I went from 2.0 my freshman year to a 3.8 my junior year, and that's because of all the support I had from my drama teachers and from, not only the support but the encouragement I've got from finding something that I'm good at, something that I can do, something that really, as you've heard from all these people who've talked before, it can change a person. The arts can change people, and I think limiting the arts is going in the wrong direction. Thank you for your time.
All right. Next, we have number 19, Caitlin Schenbert, to be followed by Casey West and Nadine Busharli. To have a number 19, Caitlin. Number 20, Casey. Number 21. Number 20, Casey West. Thank you. Thank you. To be followed by Nadine Bosali, and then Brecon Thies.
Good evening, good evening, everyone. My name is Casey West, and I've attended Glasgow Middle School for three years, this being my final year. In all three of the years that I've attended Glasgow, I've taken theater. Theater has been such a fun time at Glasgow. We have performed plays such as Annie, Mulan, Alice in Wonderland, and more. I actually just played the lead role in a modern version of Hamlet that was performed by our advanced drama class. Our advanced drama, drama class also just received a gold rating for a play we wrote ourselves about anti-bullying named Change the Mindset on Saturday at Mark Twain Middle Schools Mayfest Play Fest, where nine Fairfax County middle schools in the area got together and performed our own plays, conversed with one another, played improvisation games, and et cetera. And it was such a blast, and I'm sure I can say that for about anyone that attended. Being in drama at Glasgow has helped me make a ton of friends and have amazing experiences to look back on that I wouldn't want to have any other way. I remember walking to my first Dave Theater in sixth grade, right as I walked into the room, they had all these props and costumes, and I knew it would be a fun semester. I also remember having to audition for advanced drama at the end of, of the semester by performing a monologue, and unfortunately, I kept procrastinating to the point where I didn't know what I would perform minutes before the audition, but then I, but then I had remembered all the fun tips that we learned about improvisation, and I made a masterpiece of a monologue on the spot, passing the audition and moving on to advanced theater. Taking theater has opened my eyes and made me realize that being a professional actor is a big career choice of mine. In fifth grade, I picked theater just because all my friends were picking it, but now, after taking it, in si, in sixth, seventh, and now eighth grade, I've picked theater because I love it. Not only has theater been fun, but it has also made me a more creative person, a better public speaker, and has given me confidence when I speak to people. Theater has also taught me how to write scripts, which helped me write essays for core classes in this speech that I'm saying today. And so, theater has not just been fun and educational, it has helped us spread a very important message. As I spoke about earlier, my advanced theater class performed an anti-bullying play. Ms. DiMarco, my theater teacher, set up an opportunity for us to perform our anti-bullying play at elementary schools around the area, such as Belvedere Elementary School, Beach Street Elementary School, and Bailey's Elementary Schools, and more. I personally believe that this has spread a very important message around to the younger kids. But now, unfortunately, Glasgow's advanced theater class is getting cut next year. When I heard of this, I was shocked. After hearing of all the beneficial things that have happened to me and my fellow classmates, oh, yeah, sorry, that have happened to me and my fellow classmates, I was devastated. Thank you for listening to me and what I've had to say, and I hope it will help you influence you to not make any further cuts to the, with the drama program. Thank you for your time.
Next, next speaker is speaker number twenty-one, Nadine Bosali, to be followed by Brecon Thies and Liz Carlson.
Thank you. Good evening, esteemed members of the board, students, parents, alumni, and concerned citizens. My name is Nadine Bosali, and before I start, I'd like to tell you that although I'm listed on the student speakers list this evening, I am not in fact a student of Fairfax County Public Schools. I graduated from McLean High School just two years ago in the class of 2012, and I'm currently a rising junior at the College of William &amp; Mary. As evidenced by the sheer number of students who have come out to support their clubs and organizations and classes, and the number of students specifically representing Project Enlightenment's Living History Class, it's quite apparent that many students have found this class absolutely invaluable to their high school curriculum. As if this display doesn't showcase both their passion in their hearts and the immense value that the class has brought to their eager minds, in the span of just two days, six of my classmates who are enrolled in the same class as I reached out to me in hopes that they could share, excuse me, share their remarks, although they had other obligations to which they needed to attend. One of these students, Megan Jones, MHS class of 2010's remarks, were especially touching. She graduated this past Sunday, and I quote, "With a bachelor of, excuse me, with a bachelor of arts in history because, because of Project Enlightenment. The program allowed me," her, "to experience history in a new way, in a more personal way, and understand the importance of individuals from the past with the impact that they have on history." It is a vital elective that allows students to have a gateway into the past that typical history class does not allow for. She's currently pursuing a master's in education. To those who believe this class has intangible effects that are hard to measure on paper, I say that three years' worth of students have had and will have their lives affected by this class. The instruction that Dean Howarth has provided these students, and the fact that they've had a, excuse me, and the fact that they've had a dedicated time period and directed independent student research absolutely molded their critical thinking skills and has taught them independent research skills, the sort of traits that one doesn't acquire by taking any AP class, whether it be European history, chemistry, or physics. No class has taught me what Project Enlightenment and Living History did. If developing and strengthening thinking skills, which are absolutely imperative for any college student, doesn't sound like enough, Living History provides even more tangible results. When I had the opportunity to participate in my student interview at William &amp; Mary, my application was on the fence. I had an average GPA considering the admitted students from my high school, and my SAT score was slightly below par. When the interviewer asked me what I was interested in, my mind immediately shot to what I had learned in my Living History course. As soon as I started telling her that I researched and interpreted the role of an eighteenth-century hot air balloonist from France, her eyes lit up like fire. She began scribbling on her notepad as quickly as humanly possible. For the remainder of the interview, I tried to fit in information about my Eagle Scout project or the classes I had taken other than that, and I simply couldn't get to it. Dropping this class would be absolutely detrimental to every student at McLean High School's experience. Thank you for considering my remarks.
Next, we have a speaker number twenty-two, Brecon Thies, to be followed by Liz Carlson. Brecon?
My name is Liz Carlson, and I am a junior at George C. Marshall High School in Falls Church. If you visit my campus and you're looking for me, I don't suggest you search for me in the science or math hallways. If you walked by the French classroom, you wouldn't hear my voice or catch a glimpse of me, of my face in the window. If you visited the history hallway, you'd find a group of fun-loving history teachers, but not Liz Carlson. If you stopped by the gym, you'd find buff young men in tightly-fitting clothes, which is usually where you'd find me, but not in this case. You'd find me in the black box. My point is that if you know me, you know me because of the arts. You don't know me because I'm going to lead our football team to states or because I'll cure cancer someday. You know me because of theater, and that's all I need to be known for. I adore theater with all my heart. Theater makes me want to run around screaming and curl up in a ball and cry for a year and do backflips and save the world all by myself. In order to love something, you don't have to do so unconditionally. You find what it is about it that you find beautiful and spectacular, but for me, all of it is beautiful and spectacular. Sure, I may not love every play, but I love the spirit. I love the feeling of walking into a theater and knowing how much history occurred there. I love the thick curtains and the echo of your footsteps. The moment you know that this is your home is a beautiful moment. It's a sanctuary, it's sacred. When I was young, I found out that when I walked onstage, people were drawn to watch me. As a child, attention is not something you easily let slip through your fingers, but eventually, I learned more and more about theater, and I realized I didn't just like the limelight. I liked what it stood for. I loved being onstage and offstage. I loved the feel of constructing a set. I loved the look on our costumer's face when she would present us with our costumes. I loved the joy in our director's face during the opening night speech. School is where I was first exposed to this. In fact, school is still where I'm being exposed to this. During the show, I'm at school till eight or nine at night, strictly by choice. All the other actors have come and gone, but I'm still here with our techies cleaning the stage or gathering props. I've spent most of my spring break at March, Marshall building sets and bonding with other students who care as much as I do, and, believe me, I tend to associate myself with people who care about theater. Without theater in school, who knows where I'd be? Theater turned me into the individual that I am today. I'm not afraid to speak in public, as shown by right now. I am not afraid to be who I am, and I certainly won't apologize for it. I'm not afraid to not wash my hair for a week for a role. I don't suggest it, it gets messy. Theater is meant to make a statement. It's meant to cause backlash, outcry, and change. Don't take away our voice. Don't take away the only thing I actually genuinely care about. Without Ms. Bounds assuring theater has a voice full-time, we'll lose what we have today. This is a stepping stone to the elimination of arts in schools, and I can't let that happen. I won't let that happen. I have found what I want to do for the rest of my life, and I won't allow another little girl's opportunity to do the same be taken away. Thank you.
Let me now go to a number twenty-two, Brecon, Brecon Thies?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Hello. My name is Brecon Thies. I'm a junior at McLean High School. My English teacher, Ms. Stark, was recently let go from her position after her first year with Fairfax County due to budget cuts. During this school year, Ms. Stark has made a name for herself by being one of the, one of the best and most desirable teachers at McLean. She keeps class time exciting, engaging, interesting, and most importantly, is always involved with her students and their academic well-being. She also takes great interest in our development as young men and women. As an educator, Ms. Stark is the single best English teacher I have ever had, and has inspired me in ways that I had not yet been inspired. She even got me to like Emerson and Thoreau. By letting Ms. Stark go, you have effectively diminished the English education of students at McLean High School for decades to come. I cannot imagine McLean being able to find a better teacher to replace her in the future if the budget situation one day gets better. When I am older, I will remember a number of things about high school that were not positive. Two things in particular will come to mind. First, how unfortunate it was that we tailor our curriculum to the SOL tests. Instead of allowing great teachers like Ms. Stark to inspire students by tailoring lessons to the interests of students and teachers, we get a cookie-cutter curriculum of mediocrity, mediocrity. Instead of ideas, we get technology. The SOL has ruined teaching and learning and is very expensive and unnecessary. Let's do away with the SOL instead of excellent teachers. We should be reaching for the ceiling. We should be reaching for the ceiling and not the floor. Second, I will remember how Fairfax County Public Schools had mismanaged its budget so extraordinarily that it had hired an excellent teacher in the beginning of a year and only to let her go in the end. This is not only devastating news for her, it is also devastating news for all of our students. My question is this: why are we letting teachers go when it is you, the people in charge of the education budget, who are entirely to blame for its mismanagement? How many, how many budget administrators have been let go? On a similar note, why is it not left up to teachers to tell the county board what tools they need in their classroom rather than having a board shove unwanted tools down the teachers' throats? For example, this county spends millions of dollars on smart boards for each classroom, which rarely ever see usage and take up useful whiteboard space. If our goal is to truly educate our students, then we must choose the best teachers over the newest technology. This system is genuinely backwards. It is shocking to me how one of the wealthiest counties in the United States of America can have such a disgustingly mal-administered budget. I would ask you to fix it in a manner that benefits the students, not in ways that disenfranchise them, by letting great teachers like Ms. Stark go. Thank you for your time.
We have just gone through a list of all the student speakers, one through twenty-three, but there were several no-shows earlier, so let me go back to our number three on the list, Jennifer Horowitz. Number four, Taj Rouch. Number five, Shivani Gopta. Shivani.
When I mentioned the idea of merely attending this meeting, and someone told me I need not waste time pouring a glass of water on a forest fire. He knows as well as I know, I'm not the kind of student who raises their voice in protest. I don't argue with teachers, I don't pass around petitions or complain about policies, because I know you all look out for our best interests like our parents do, and I appreciate that incredibly, considering how hard it must be. I didn't come here today to protest anything, not the ends of my beloved Project Enlightenment, a mainstay at McLean for over two decades, because I know we are small, even with hundreds of students who passed through our club, pioneers of a unique class with independent work and critical thinking, students who put it on the Common App and found themselves at Stanford, and least significantly of all, the group I spent so many seventh periods and weekends performing with. I know McLean Chorus, though much bigger than us, is still insignificant in a school system of thousands. That chorus I've heard crying in the halls about the loss of their director, who's been there so long, she taught my freshman English teacher. I know from distraught friends that English teacher Ms. Stark will lose her job due to budget cuts and paperwork, some higher office misplace. And I know these concerns are tiny in the grand scheme of things, but they feel like little chips at who we are. Things that made us regret snow days and count down to Labor Day and read books when TV and Twitter were there, teacher recommendations for summer jobs that can make or break applications, and after-school activities I cherish now without a sponsor. I love these small programs and people so much that I came to pour my tiny glass. If we have money for smart boards and homecoming jerseys, maybe there could be enough for a class about loving science and working together that usually costs nothing to the school. And though it's too late for me, I hope that my younger siblings can count on a great experience that I see crumbling with your help. Thank you.
Number six, Marie Peronaki. Number nine, Nikki Lee. Number twelve, Kareem Dumar. Number thirteen, Aiden Behringer. Number fourteen, Matthew Howard. Number fifteen, Wolf Glick. Number seventeen, Alex Glassman. Number nineteen, Caitlin Schenbert. Before I turn the microphone over to Bishop T. Verkop, starting with the number twenty-four, those student speakers who have spoken tonight, when I say this, I'm speaking on behalf of entire board, then my, my colleagues on the board will agree with me that I have never been this much proud of our students. This is what Fairfax County Public School System is all about. You guys are so eloquent and so persuasive, and thank you for coming out this evening. Would, Mr. Verkop, start with, could you start with number twenty-four?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next speaker will be Corinne Krill, to be followed by Heather Davies, and then Dean Howarth. Ms. Krill.
Hello. My name is Corinne Krill. My husband and I have lived in Fairfax County for the past fifteen years and have two children in the Fairfax County school system. By the time I finish speaking, three more American youth will have tried to take their own lives. That's five hundred thousand a year. Sadly, many will succeed. In the past several years alone, ten of these deaths were from our community, our families. These kids were once happy, full of potential, and could have overcome whatever they were facing, but didn't know how or were afraid to ask for help. They learned English and math, but not what research says is the most important factor for a happy life: how to handle the hard parts, the difficult emotions, the trauma, the grief, the anxiety, and the stress. Nearly ten percent of youth ages nine to seventeen suffer from serious emotional disturbances and depression that interferes with their work, sleep, study, and eating. Half of college students drop out or fail, mostly from stress, and a 2012-2013 Fairfax County study found that one-third of our eighth, tenth, and twelfth graders felt sad or hopeless in the past year. The loss of life in our community these past few years is evidence of this, but there is even more less visible suffering under the surface in our families, not to mention the fiscal costs of all that we bear. The good news is that there are now over three thousand studies from the fields of psychology, mental health, and contemplative neurosciences that- mental health, and contemplative neurosciences that point to the benefits of mindfulness-based practices. These are simple, secular practices that train the mind to pay attention to present moment sensations, thoughts, emotions, in a way that brings calm, clarity, and focus. Mindfulness has been shown to improve mental health, emotional regulation, well-being, executive function, learning readiness and behavior, social-emotional intelligence and well-being, and empathy. The Mayo Clinic now prescribes it, Harvard Business School teaches it, Google, Target, and General Mills use it. The Seattle Seahawks attribute their success to it, and teachers everywhere, including right here in this area, now use it to manage their classrooms and their own stress. I work with a local nonprofit called Minds that has reached over 2,500 teachers and parents and 2,500 students in nearly 30 different DC-area schools and youth-serving organizations. This includes, most recently, over 1,000 students at Walt Whitman High School in Montgomery County. An evaluation of that program found significant improvement in students' sense of well-being and decrease in their stress compared with the control group. We are proposing a five-year plan to introduce mindfulness-based social-emotional learning training to our students, parents, and teachers in partnership with Josh Anderson Foundation and Community of Solutions and Heart and Soul Center. The first phase would begin this fall and serve at least 2,000 students, teachers and parents at one school, with two 12-week blocks of in-class and after-school training. We are also partnering with other organizations such as George Mason Center for Advancement of Well-being and UVA's Contemplative Sciences Center. Minds and the Josh Anderson Foundation have already given introductory workshops and have good relationships at Frost, Woodson, Langley, Cedar Lane, and Thomas Jefferson. We would greatly consider your consideration in funding this program. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Krill. Next is Heather Davies, to be followed by Dean Howarth and Michael Click. Dean Howarth.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dean Howarth. I'm in my 26th year at McLean High School, where I have been humbled and inspired by students like this for my entire career, and I consider myself blessed. And to divert from my prepared speech for one moment, I'm involved with a history program that was spoken of. John Adams once said that he studied war and law and politics so that his children could study art and philosophy and music, and I think Mr. Adams would be very proud this evening. Well, every year at Budget Time, our attention turns to the numbers: class sizes, data analysis, staff ratios, personnel reductions, and dollar signs. There does seem to be an upside to the dehumanizing mathematics, however. When it's time to cut budgets, it's easier to erase numbers, delete outliers, couch decisions in obtuse data, subtract money, and add work. Numbers are easier to cope within people and their livelihoods and their morale. Most classroom teachers think that education is still a human endeavor, where creativity counts, where morale counts, where joy counts, and excitement counts, more than just data and scores. But some numbers don't lie, especially numbers with seven zeros, like our budget deficit. FCPS is sinking in million-dollar deficits. As a result, the student quality of education and the profession of teaching is diminishing in quality and stature. Last fall, our superintendent said in a teacher forum, "When your ship is taking on water, you have to throw things overboard. Even some good things need to be tossed in favor of what is truly essential." It is abundantly clear that our ship, due to no fault of the passengers, is sinking fast, and the clear skies are not predicted anytime soon. Some people say that FCPS has a lot of ballast that can be thrown overboard to stay afloat. We teachers agree. FCPS carries a lot of excess cargo that should be set adrift, at least until we weather the storm. But I fear that we are throwing overboard the passengers and the life preservers and keeping the gold chandeliers inexpensive china. Passengers are the kids, the life preservers are the programs and the electives they truly love, a lot more than their SOL tests or AP tests. And yes, for some kids, as you've heard, a class or a teacher can be their life preserver. Nonetheless, even in hard times, we seem to keep the chandeliers and luxury items onboard, those pricey, flashy, ponderous programs that are trickled down from the top in the name of best practices. But in reality, they're expensive, conformist agendas levied upon the rank and file by specialists far removed from the classroom. They have interesting names like ECART, PD360, Smarter, PLT, ISIS, PLC, PLC, CT, IC, TPEP, PLA, to which I all say SOS. It's a matter of equity. If we have to lose some of what is costly and essential, we should also lose some of what is costly but not essential, the things that have little to do with teachers and students despite being called best practices by paid consultants and disciples intoxicated by faddish phrases. We need to correct our course and refocus our resources. It is still in our control, and I ask the board to jettison the right stuff before we end up like the Titanic. Thank you.
Mr. Howarth, I apologize for not pronouncing your name correctly. And I believe that Speaker number three, Jennifer Horowitz, has arrived. Is that true? Okay, so if you could wait here, please, but since we're getting some people coming in, I think I'd like to reread the ground rules of the speaking, just so everybody has heard that. So let's all remember that each speaker is allotted three minutes, and to be respectful of everyone, we ask that you stay within that time. The deputy clerk will start the timer when you begin to speak, and you will be able to see the time remaining on the clock here on the podium. The buzzer will sound, as you've heard, at the conclusion of your three minutes. As you've heard me do, there are three names and your numbers will be, oh, I guess I haven't done the numbers. Three names and numbers will be announced at a time, and when you hear your name and speaker number, please move closer to the front of the auditorium so you will be ready when it's your turn to speak. And any speakers who are not here, when their name is called, will be called again at a later time. I'm going to leave some of the details for later, but I think that gives us a good refresher. So I believe we have Jennifer Horowitz.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jennifer Horowitz, and I'm a senior at McLean High School. For two of those years, I've been involved in the McLean High School Living History Program, one of the greatest and most useful classes I've ever been in. In this program, we call it Project Enlightenment, students learn to portray a historical character based on extensive research inside and outside the classroom. We perform in presidential homes, Smithsonian museums, the Corcoran Gallery of Art, and many other locations to teach tourists and visitors about 18th-century life, culture, politics, music, society, and science. I have played characters from Russian dignitaries to German scientists, and in our class, we have European artists, American militiamen, colleagues of Mozart, British spies, and a French balloonist, and many other eclectic characters that display the variety of facets of life in 18th century that we are able to learn about. Project Enlightenment has taught me the importance of teamwork, how to effectively communicate everything we've learned, and the value of learning from other students. I have also watched many students in our classroom transform into better performers and more confident public speakers throughout the course of this year, and I have also found confidence and trust in the camaraderie of my peers. This Project Enlightenment has affected me personally, not just academically. Two months ago, my father passed away, and I quickly found solace through the opportunity to become someone else for a day. The fact that this somebody else happened to be the first woman to ever discover a comet, and that I was able to teach young girls the importance of feminism and having girls in the science field made it even more worthwhile and rewarding. Project Enlightenment also helped me get into my number-one college choice, the College of William &amp; Mary, because I mentioned that I had experience in historical reenactment, and for this reason wanted desperately to make Williamsburg my future home. Without Project Enlightenment, I wouldn't have known how much I loved reenactment, nor would I be working at Colonial Williamsburg next summer. I have learned the importance of preserving historical residences, and in the last few years, I have finally gotten to be able to perform at them. My mother noted in her affidavit that this class represents the best that Fairfax County has to offer. As someone who has been involved in many advanced music classes, varsity athletics, honor societies, and over nine AP classes in Fairfax County, I still think this statement is absolutely true. In no other class or sport do provide such a valuable thing to others as sparking their interest in history and the founding of our nation. Unfortunately, the butt-traxis has forced students to eliminate small, specialized electives like this one. It upsets me to think that little kids, like my little brother, who have seen us perform countless times, will not be able to be in this class and will not be able to learn through doing like I have been able to. I hope that we can learn from this and now act to prevent other schools from having to lose their programs that mean so much to their students' lives. Thank you.
Next will be Speaker number 27, Michael Click, to be followed by number 28, Kenny George, and number 29, John Horan. Mr. Click.
Thank you. My name is Michael Click, and for the last 17 years of my 20-year career, I've taught French at McLean High School. In my desk, I keep a note from a former student. I read it from time to time. She wrote me, "Your class was always a bright spot in my day. Most days, it was the only bright spot. You don't know how important that was for me." I read that note because it reminds me about my job. It reminds me that I am valued by the most important people in Fairfax County. But do you value us? Teachers like me are not going to pick up and leave the county. We're committed to our students, and we are a part of our communities. But we are not valued by this board, and we all know it. Valuing an employee means compensating the employee. Montgomery County figured out how to pay their teachers fairly. DC figured it out, too. Why can't you? Simply trying isn't enough if there is never a result, year after year. It shows that we are not valued. Supervisor Herity has a point. There is waste here. Ask any teacher. I don't need five people in the World Languages Curriculum Office to make me a good teacher. New teachers have mentors and teams at our schools. They don't need a great beginnings office. I can send my licensure renewal directly to Richmond instead of the gatehouse. Instructional coaches get paid the same salary as we do, but they don't teach any students. Because of these coaches, every school has one less teacher in the classroom. And don't get me started on the teacher evaluation tool and corresponding administrative office. Collecting artifacts and endless amounts of data has never helped me make a bright spot in a student's day. But when people suggest cutting these things, we're told that a couple of million here, a couple of million there, won't make a difference in the budget. But it would show the teachers that we are valued because you are trying to value us. Picking public fights with supervisors may feel like the right thing to do, but it doesn't guarantee us a step increase next year or in the following years. As I've said before, I'm not leaving McLean. I love my job. But the recession is over. The markets are back. Unemployment is down. Housing prices are up. If you truly value what we are doing for your children, you'll find a way to make this work. Otherwise, we know exactly how much support you have for us.
Next is Kenny George, to be followed by John Horan, and then Jennifer Stark. Mr. George.
Mr. George is not with us this evening. He submitted his comments, and we apologize. Hi, I'm John Horan. I'm a teacher at McLean High School. I'm in my 34th year as a teacher, and the remarks I make reflect probably the experiences I've had. The comments I make will seem hollow in that none of it will provide any new funds for you. But I'm not really here to talk about new funds. I'm here to talk about existing funds. I understand that principals have discretionary funding. They can replace a teacher with an instructional coach or a test coordinator. And in times of abundance, this is a wonderful thing. We are not in times of abundance. These people do not help most of us teach. Good idea? Absolutely. Bad time? Also, absolutely. In times of abundance, institutional coaches should be gone. We have a course in leadership. We pay two teachers for two periods at least $25,000. Again, it has some value, but student government used to be an extracurricular. Do we need to spend $25,000 when we could restore some of our music programs or our living history programs? I'm a graduate of OCS at Newport, and I do think we can cut high school leadership without doing much damage to education. Then we have professional learning communities. We now gather every week and several times to discuss what we're doing in the classroom, except that it's all dictated from above. Teachers need time to prepare, to grade, to grow as individuals. We teach as individuals, not in a group, so it's much better for us to learn how to do this earlier rather than later. Next year, we're going to have a new computer program costing several million dollars. It will allow us to take attendance in a way that parents can see what their children are doing. A nice idea, but you know, and I know, that every time you have a new computer program, you need more money because you have bugs, you have breakdowns, you have things that simply don't work as they should in the first, second, or third year, where a very large system and our technological skills are, at least some of us older people, not as good as we might like. We are a system rife with waste. We never resolve to do anything about it. But to provide the best in education, we should cut some of the things that are inessential and basically take care of our students because that's why we became teachers. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is John Horan, to be followed by Jennifer Stark, then Barrett Cashden.
That was John.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Jennifer Stark.
Good evening. John Irving wrote that if you care about something, you have to protect it. If you're lucky enough to find a way of life you love, you have to find the courage to live it. This penetratingly resonates within me because I feel very strongly about teaching as a profession and about the value of teachers, and I truly wish that sentiment was echoed systemically. I've learned firsthand that in this county, a teacher's value is an afterthought. The fact is, this county prioritizes larger class sizes over the value of a teacher, and I am here speaking in front of you as a de-staffed English teacher from McLean High School. I came to work in this county in good faith and invested hundreds of hours in my students and their families, reaching out to not only teach them an English class, but to help them develop fully as people whom the community can be proud of. I devote my time to excellence in education and not as an afterthought, as a foremost urgent priority. FCPS does not have the same commitment to its teachers as the teachers have to the children of this community, and it is a shame that I am now only in my fourth year of teaching, struggling to find the courage to continue to pursue this vocation. A commitment was made to me, and I was uprooted, and I was hired and let go in less than one year's time, and I don't want to be blown from school to school within this county as I attempt to build my life here in Virginia. I moved here from New York City last July after I was hired. I have a master's degree from Columbia University and taught in a New York City public school for three years. While my experience at McLean High School has been exceptionally rewarding and during which I've grown professionally, I could not recommend, in good faith, that a teacher move to this county for work and would say that its once-first-rate reputation must be a misconception because of the personal anguish I've had to undergo this year and because I have a clear vision of the county's commitments into the future. I got married in December, and my fifth-grade teacher, Mrs. Barry, was there at my wedding. She was also at my high school graduation to watch me walk across the stage. She also took my class to Normandy for the 50th anniversary of D-Day in 1994. But more importantly, she's also watching me speak right now, and that is what we need to value because some teachers stay with us forever. Teachers' commitments need to be treasured, and those commitments need to be reciprocated by the county. Please embolden yourselves. When it's time to make cuts, make sure it's neither the teachers nor in favor of larger class sizes. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Barrett Cashden, to be followed by Megan DeRusso, then Judy Bott.
First, I want to give a shout-out and a thank you to my McLean High School colleagues and students who spoke so elegantly and passionately tonight about their classes, about their teachers, about their programs, and I say thank you to them. So here we are again in the sixth year of a step freeze, and it's getting pretty cold. Teachers are still struggling to stay afloat financially, living and working in Fairfax County, and wondering why. The cost of living has gone up. Our county taxes definitely have gone up. Price of gas is going up, but our salaries have not in the last five years. Some say that this school board no longer values its teachers. Some say that this school board no longer values its teachers. The question I have is, did the school board knowingly pull a bait and switch, attracting young teachers to the county with promises of yearly step increases so that, in the course of a few years, they would be able to afford living and working in the county, and then break that promise and freeze the step? Is that fair? Teachers on the sixth step in Fairfax County earn $59,000 a year. Arlington County, it's $70,000 a year. Montgomery County, it's $72,000 a year. And even in little old Falls Church City, teachers earn considerably more than we do here in Fairfax County. Do their school boards and community value their teachers and quality education more than we do? It sure looks that way. Can Fairfax County plead poverty to justify paying the teachers such a low wage? Not hardly. We are rated one of the wealthiest counties in the country. My friends, we're in a crisis. I know that you're aware that over two-thirds of our teachers must have a second job in order to survive and work in this county. Having a second job makes it difficult for teachers to stay after school and work with their students. As a sidebar, when the county talks about the possibility of a late start and later dismissal, we cringe. Do you have any idea how that would affect teachers' second job? Not to mention, if a teacher does stay after school to help students, they will be confronted with our rush hour traffic. You want solutions? Here goes. Why not substantially decrease the budget at Gatehouse and the clusters with all the additional professional development programs that Mr. Klick and some of the other people spoke about, and reallocate those funds towards making teachers' salaries more equitable and competitive? And in addition, some of the funding can come from a meals tax that so many other counties are doing to maintain a solid education. Finally, last week was Teacher Appreciation Week. If you really want to show your appreciation for what our teachers do, and I might add that both students and parents just did that last week in our schools, and we thank them very much for that, then for God's sakes, please make teachers' salaries more competitive and equitable so they can live and work in the county and continue to be the professionals they want to be. This needs to be done sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Megan DeRusso, to be followed by Judy Bott, then Karen Wolpert. Ms. DeRusso.
I am a teacher at McLean High School also. And when I graduated from college in New York, I spent time figuring out exactly where I wanted to work. It became apparent very quickly that Fairfax County, with all of its accolades, was the place to be. It appears to have been false advertising. If I were doing that research now, it would never point me in the direction of Fairfax, a county that does not choose to support its teachers. Like most of us, I teach because I love it. In the media recently, McLean High School teachers were criticized for the threat of optional cutbacks as a way to hurt students. I'm here today to clarify, because that breaks my heart. In my case, these cutbacks are not optional, but rather, they are forced, and I feel guilty about that. They are forced, because between my husband and me, two FCPS teachers, we have five jobs. Since I began working for FCPS in 2009, I have had one step increase. Between the both of us, over our short career here, we are making over $15,000 less than we expected to be making at this point in time. How is it possible for us to sustain our lifestyle or have another baby when taxes increase and the cost of living increases, but our salary never does? These forced cutbacks, in my case, are due to the fact that I leave work and I have to go to my second job. If not my second job, then I'm going to my third job. If I'm not working late, then my husband is. And that's all before picking my daughter up at daycare that now costs almost as much as I make each month. On top of that, we live well outside the county. So how can I be the Spanish club sponsor or offer extra review sessions after school? I wish I could. The fun stuff and the individualized instruction is why I became a teacher, but at this point, it's not possible. The real irony is that with this salary increase we're asking for, it will be completely eaten up by the current cost of living, and we will still be living behind the times. Why would the best teachers come to a place that will not guarantee them a livable wage? Any smart young person would look at our situation here in FCPS and say, "You're right. I'm going someplace else." Just five short years ago, when I started, it was a different place. At that time, I thought that Fairfax would have been the place to make a career. Now, it's seemingly impossible. What I ask is that you find a way to invest in teachers long-term. Think twice before investing in the professional development department that professionally develops the professional developers. Avoid funding these positions that are supposed to support and coach teachers at a time when we cannot even afford our teachers. Class sizes are increasing. Teachers are being de-staffed. Eight electives have been cut at McLean High School alone, and we still continue to support those programs and initiatives that do not directly affect student learning and achievement. How is it possible that at McLean, we've lost one teacher per department due to budgetary constraints, yet a significant amount of funds in FCPS go to programs that students, parents, and teachers alike would not deem truly essential? Desperate times call for desperate measures, and we cannot allocate money to these programs when we cannot afford them. We need good teachers, and investment in teachers is the only true direct investment in the quality of education we provide here in Fairfax County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is number 33, Judy Bott, to be followed by number 34, Karen Wolpert, and then 35, Carla Okuchi. Ms. Bott.
Hi, I am Judy Bott. I have been in the county for many decades, and as I see it, the county is in a freefall. And I am utterly confused about this. I am going to give you my unadored rendition of how I think the school board seems to envision teachers. I make no apologies. I am actually speaking in favor of raises for all of us. I don't understand why it is that you have not deemed it essential to pay back the teachers for all the work that they do with your own children. We are a group of people who like kids, but we seem to be replaceable according to the way you seem to envision us. There's a bit of reality here. People have mentioned it. Housing prices in Northern Virginia are higher than they were before the 2008 bust. Every split of land is getting rise to enormous behemoth houses. This speaks of big money in the county. People have mentioned that. To live here is outrageously expensive due to the high incomes, not the teacher incomes, in this county. We are acknowledged to be the third richest community in the United States, but we are the second lowest-paid teachers in Northern Virginia. This is not a new statistic. Having decades in the county, I know we have always waited for raises, always, always waited for us to be deemed essential to the school system. The school board seems never to have money to pay teachers. And interestingly enough, at the end, after the budgetary meetings are done and everything is decided, money is found. Millions of dollars have been found after the budgetary meetings have been concluded. We could laugh at it if it weren't so sad. I find this absolutely mind-boggling. Teachers have obviously not been a priority to you. After all, my consideration is that we do everything for free anyway, and we do. We stay after, some of us until 5:00, 6:00 o'clock if kids are taking online. I had a situation. A kid was taking an online Spanish course, wasn't working for her, and she stayed with me and got a course after school by me every day until the Spanish language AP was finished. Seemingly, according to you all, we are replaceable. No problem. Like September, you need teachers, go get another teacher. The teachers and what the teachers do on a daily, hourly basis are what has made Fairfax County schools renowned. But you seem to think that we are replaceable. The administration building, which will now be two administration buildings, is manned by administrators with extraordinarily high salaries. Administrators who never see a kid, never talk to a kid, nor take responsibility for their emotional, mental, and physical problems. But they are administrators.
Ms. Bott, if you could get to your conclusion, please.
To you, we are replaceable. Ask a student to them. The teachers are irreplaceable.
Next is speaker number 34, Karen Wolpert, to be followed by number 35, Carla Okuchi, and 36, Rachel Bingaman. Ms. Wolpert.
Good evening. I'm a German teacher in Fairfax County and the mom of a fourth grader at Fairhill Elementary School in Fairfax. As a world language teacher, I consider the learning of a new language and culture to be part of every well-rounded student's education. But if we're going to do it, let's do it right. And I'd like to, unlike my colleagues, actually propose a cut. I'd like to propose that we end FLESS and concentrate instead on serious language study in grades seven through 12. Many FCPS elementary schools offer FLESS, 30 minutes of one language twice a week. My son's school is one of 10 to offer Chinese. It's the only subject he doesn't like. Why start off the language learning experience with the world's most difficult language with no alphabet, no linguistic connection to English? The high school he'll attend doesn't even offer Chinese, so he'll never get proficient. If we keep FLESS, let's at least limit it to more accessible Indo-European languages, which students can take from first grade all the way through 12th. 30 minutes a week is not enough time to make progress. None of my high school students remember much of anything from their FLESS language experience. Either give it serious time in the classroom or get rid of it. Offering only one language in the elementary school hurts all the other language programs at the middle and high school levels. Why switch to French in middle school after having six years of Spanish already? In many schools, FLESS balloons the high school enrollment of that language while critically diminishing all the other language offerings. As an alternative to FLESS, I would like to see the return of IFL, Intro to Foreign Languages. IFL used to be offered here to 7th or 8th graders, giving them a year of eight-week mini-courses in several different languages, so that the students could make an informed choice about what language to pursue. IFL gives middle schoolers a taste of various cultures and teaches them to have a basic conversation with hundreds of millions of global citizens. And IFL can be taught by our polyglot middle and high school staff, many of whom are being de-staffed due to their county's demands for larger and larger class sizes. Ideally, our county would offer a nice variety of world languages, K through 12. FLESS classes would be taught seriously, at least an hour at a time. Ideally, we wouldn't have this budget crisis, and ideally, world languages wouldn't always be on the budgetary chopping block. But that's not where we live. Cut FLESS, if you must, but at least consider offering middle school students a year of IFL, so as they could have a taste of what they might learn later. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is number 35, Carla Okuchi, to be followed by number 36, Rachel Bingaman, and then 37, Dong Hun Lee. Ms. Okuchi.
Good evening, Deputy Superintendent Dan Paris, Chairman Moon, and the Board. I'm Carla Okuchi, music educator at Hyblavally Elementary School and member of the Fairfax Educators Association. Today, I stand before you as a product of Fairfax County Public Schools, a parent, and educator, speaking out to help preserve our world-class school system. "FCPS belief" reads, "A well-rounded education enables students to lead productive, fulfilling, creative, and culturally rich lives." The educators working to facilitate this are frustrated, tired, and were ready for positive change with regards to the workload and time. We already arrive early and stay late to prep grade, follow up on emails, conference with, and contact parents, and try to tackle the overwhelming stacks of paperwork. Title I, educators took a pay cut and reduction in instructional time and still enable our most challenging students to succeed. For specialists, once our day begins, we have no time between classes to follow up on behavior issues, set up materials for the next class, or even offer extra remediation or assistance to those who might need it. Many of us don't even have a classroom of our own so that we can implement best practices. Data collection, e-card testing have taken over our once-creative learning environments. CLT meetings, IEPs, pyramid meetings, staff development training sessions, the new evaluation system, and meetings that go beyond contract hours have become the norm. PowerPoints and Smartboard lessons take hours to create at home on our own time. We calculated the new standards-based report card takes 60 hours to complete. A potential change being discussed is the elimination of early release Mondays. Maintaining this teacher-directed time is essential in order for our elementary educators to keep up with the workload. Site rehearsals for our annual All-County Choral Festival take place during this time. Our music educators utilize and hone their choral directing techniques, collaborate with and observe colleagues while working on concert material. Why must teachers be required to sacrifice more of their own time in order to participate in such a worthwhile professional experience? The arts are the ideal vehicle for teaching 21st-century skills. We need time for quality instruction so students can learn how to function in groups, take risks, and learn to both fail and succeed together by removing the needs to find the right A, B, C, D answer. I look to the future of Fairfax County Public Schools and what we'll offer. I see every elementary school providing full-day pre-K, secondary language classes, two days of general music, an opportunity to sing in chorus, a choice to learn either a band or string instrument. Wouldn't it be great if we could offer more dance and theater? Our students only get one chance at a quality education, so let's make sure we continue to provide the very best by addressing the issues of time and workload. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Rachel Bingaman, to be followed by Dong Hun Lee, and then Kimberly Adams. Ms. Bingaman.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Bingaman. I am an elementary music specialist at Hyblavally Elementary, and I share one classroom with the former speaker, Carla Okuchi. Just two short years ago, after graduating college with highest honors, I had a choice between three job offers and one day. I made the choice to come work for Fairfax County Public Schools. I in no way regret that decision. I came to this district because I knew they supported the arts and I thought they supported their teachers. I absolutely adore my school, students, and colleagues. This was a fantastic place for me to start my career, but that's the problem. I can only afford to start my teaching career here. I feel, as a young and developing teacher, my workload is simply overbearing. On top of my contracted instructional and planning time, I am also expected to do after-school academy courses, attend CLT meetings, and participate in IEP meetings when I can. I also need to work collaboratively with two other general music teachers, who are my lifeline. And that time is hard to find, considering we have a total of 60 minutes of common planning time in a work week. If that's not enough, I have to give each of my students seven grades every quarter. I have 18 classes worth of kids, average 20 kids per class. That's 10,080 grades on report cards every year. It takes me 40 to 60 hours, depending. Last year took me more, this year went quicker. But 40 hours to enter grades? On top of all that, I have and will continue to have to endure the strenuous and stressful teacher evaluation system for at least one more year. If all the demands of my typical teaching job were not enough, I work, three, count them three, part-time positions to help me financially. The median household income of Fairfax County residents is over $107,000 a year. If you look at my household income with me, my multiple jobs, and my boyfriend, who works as a utility forester, we are over $20,000 below that mark. It's no wonder we can only afford a one-bedroom apartment off of Route 1 that takes over half my monthly take-home to pay for. We're lucky, too. We don't have student loans to pay for. We don't have car payments. Plenty of my young colleagues do, and they continue to stay in debt because their salary can't cover it, can't cover rent, can't cover food, and can't cover paying back loans. I know the quickest way to a pay increase is my master's degree, and I want to obtain that someday. But it's unfeasible for me to do it this time. I can't afford the time nor fund it, and there's an obvious lack of continuing education funds in the county. The bottom line is this: I am a well-educated, developing, energetic, passionate, young teacher. I truly enjoy working for Fairfax County Public Schools. And Fairfax County Public Schools has helped me through my first two years of teaching. But I will not be here much longer if the workload decreases and the salary doesn't increase. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Bingaman. Next is speaker number 37, Dong Hun Lee, to be followed by number 38, Kimberly Adams, and then number 39, Kevin Hickerson. Mr. Lee.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dong Hun Lee. I'm a father of two boys, Hayden and Leo. Hayden is six years old, and Leo turns three years next month. Every Tuesday has been very special for my family. Both Hayden and Leo have taken Korean early literacy programs that is designed for Korean-American parents and kids. parents and kids. I have a full-time job, and I work many hours every week, yet. This program is always a priority for my family, and I have taken Tuesday off from my job for this program. Throughout the Korean Early Literacy Program, Hayden and Leo could have a lot of good friends who have similar cultural background, and the program helps them to be accustomed to a school environment when they start kindergarten. However, the most important and beneficial things through this program is that I learned how to bring on my kids in this country as a wonderful Korean-American citizens. I came to the U.S. when I was 25 years old. I've never gone through a public school system in the U.S. I have never ridden the yellow school bus until I volunteered for a chapter for Hayden's school field trip. I've never known that there's no AC in a school bus. As an immigrant parent, I would have been struggled with a lot of things without this program. Through this program, I have learned how the Fairfax County Public School System is running, how to respect my kids, and how to raise my kids as outstanding U.S. citizens. However, during this program, I felt that the course doesn't provide enough hours, and not many Korean-American parents could take advantage of this wonderful program because of a lack of advertisement. I would like the Fairfax County School Board to support this program with extended hours, provide more classes, and advertisement for this program. Therefore, more Korean-American parents can participate in this program, and they raise their kids as wonderful students in our school system. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Next is Kimberly Adams, to be followed by Kevin Hickerson, and then Allison Batty. Ms. Adams.
Good evening, Chairman Moon, School Board, Deputy Superintendent Paris. My name is Kimberly Adams, and I stand here on behalf of the members of the Fairfax Education Association. As you have heard tonight and will continue to hear, we are standing firm in our belief that you should close the gap in the salary increase. The members of the FEA have worked tirelessly over the last few months to secure as much funding as possible for our schools. We wrote letters, we rallied, we met individually with members of the Board of Supervisors, we lobbied the General Assembly in Richmond, and attended every meeting where school funding was on the agenda. We have been there every step of the way. You have said repeatedly that compensation is your priority. I was as frustrated and angry as you when I watched the Board of Supervisors say that schools are their priority, and then decide that only 30% of their new revenue would be transferred to our schools. I ask you to lead by example and fully fund your priorities. Why? Because we know that our students deserve the best that this community can offer. We know that a great teacher makes the difference in a child's life. And we know that the people who provide all the support services in our classrooms and schools are critical to a successful learning environment. We have heard you say that you know these things, too. So now it is time for you to act on that knowledge by finding the money necessary to fund a full-year step increase for your employees. I have heard Dr. Garza say that after years of cuts, there isn't a ready pot of money to use to close this gap, and I expect that this is probably true. However, our association and the community at large want you to dig a little deeper and make every effort to find the money to make step an effective at the beginning of our contracts. There are still some unknowns, particularly the state has not yet finalized its budget, and so we ask you to remain open to the idea of making every effort to move toward a full-year step. There may be savings in the Pearson Contract with reduced state testing next year. APIB test fees might be a possibility, as the community supports placing not a burden of responsibility, but academic responsibility on the backs of our students. Possibly programs that aren't giving you a best return on your investment could be looked into. And we also ask that you look at reductions in office staffing, central office staffing, particularly professional learning and accountability and instructional services, to return some of these quality educators to the classrooms where they are needed most. Recently, the FEA conducted a survey of our members on workload, and there was an open-ended question that many of our members took the opportunity to write comments on. Some were very compelling, and I'd like to share a couple of those responses with you. I just put in notice that because of the workload, I will not be returning to teaching. I made more money and worked fewer hours with a high school diploma in industry than I do with a master's degree in FCPS. On top of this, teaching requires me to spend my own money purchasing necessary resources for my classroom. And secondly, we went into this profession knowing that all the extra time and money to buy supplies came with the territory, but when there's no increase in salaries, it makes it tough to grin and bear it all the time. After being hired last summer, I spent an unpaid week in training. No startup funds for my classroom were offered, so I spent hundreds of dollars on materials. Luckily, I had an August paycheck from my previous job, otherwise I would never have been able to work in Fairfax County. As you said to the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Moon, we have reached a tipping point. Do you value your employees? Are they your priority or not? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Adams. Next is Kevin Hickerson, to be followed by Allison Batty, and then Ian Howell. Mr. Hickerson.
Thank you. First of all, I wanted to say, it makes me proud as an FCPS teacher to see so many students out here today advocating for what they believe in. So thank you very much for doing so. Good evening, Deputy Superintendent Paris, Chairman Moon, and School Board members. My name is Kevin Hickerson, and I'm Vice President of Fairfax Education Association and teacher at Chantilly High School. I come forward to speak on the budget and the allocation of resources to compensation and class size. Specifically, I will talk about paying for APIB tests when there are so many other needs. First, I want to thank Dr. Garza and the School Board for their advocacy of the school system during the Board of Supervisors' budget debate. It was the first time in a while that I'd seen a concerted effort to drive debate forward on making sure that FCPS has adequate resources to do its job effectively. You did not buckle or budge, even when there was pressure exerted upon you. It gives me hope for the future in these budget debates. Ultimately, we came up short and are now forced to make tougher decisions on staffing and salary. Staffing is a huge priority that we need to look at in the future if we want FCPS to be a world-class school system. Classes should be student-centered. However, with 30-plus students in the general education class, this is not allowed to happen. Kids that are in special education or ELL classes, especially self-contained, are being crammed 12 to 15 students at a time, which takes away the whole point of them being in a smaller classroom. The FEA looks forward to working with FCPS over the next few years to find efficiencies in the school system to put more money into the classroom to lessen class size. The good news is that this budget provides us for a step to be given to its employees. This is the first one given in three years. Hopefully, step increases along with market rate adjustments become the norm in the future. Although a great effort has been made to fund a salary increase, I want to find a way to make it a full-step increase for all employees. As it stands right now, the U.S. scale will not have any increase until the next calendar year. The U.S. 19 and below are the most underpaid and vulnerable employees. Giving them an adjustment in February or June is not going to help those employees during the majority of the school year. We need to reach down deep and find a cut that will help these employees. So what can we do to help us get to the full step? We should eliminate AP and IB testing fees. I understand that the need of having AP and IB classes that push our brightest students to reach their full potential. I just do not see how paying for these tests is achieving this goal. Some students are doing APIB because they actually want to stretch their minds. Other students are looking for that extra edge by getting an additional grade point to get into college, while quite a few are doing APIB classes because their parents and peers pressure them to do so. We have to look at whether we are getting the best bang for our buck. Students who normally would not be in an APIB class because of factors I have mentioned are taking the test because they have to take it, and end up getting a 1 or 2 on it. Should we be paying for students to take this test when I have AP teachers tell me that some students do not take it seriously and will fail the test as a result? We still pay for all the free and reduced lunch students to be able to take this test. That is not the issue. The issue is whether we want students who are serious about taking a test that the county is paying for, so they can reap the benefits. Paying for AP and IB tests is a nice luxury to have when we can afford it. Except for free and reduced lunch students, I advocate eliminating AP and IB test fees from this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hickerson. The next speaker is number 40 Allison Batty, to be followed by 41 Ian Howell and 42 John Bame. Ms. Batty.
Good evening, Chairman Moon, members of the School Board, and Deputy Superintendent Paris. My name is Allison Batty, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Fairfax Education Association and the School-Based Technology Specialist, which I am one. Several times in the past months, you have watched Spotlight on Learning presentations in this very auditorium. Presentations that highlighted the best and the brightest that Fairfax County Public Schools has to offer. One was the STEM and STEAM projects at Irving Middle School and West Potomac High School. The other was the 5th Grade Global Awareness Project at West Springfield Elementary. At the core of these remarkable presentations was a common element, the School-Based Technology Specialist. A number of years ago, the School Board saw fit to ensure that each school would have its own ESPITS to make sure that their large investment in technology was being used effectively to the betterment of our ultimate clients, the students. That investment has paid off in more ways than you imagined. In most cases, the ESPITS have become the technology leaders in the schools and provide valuable technology training to all staff members. They are the link that ensures that the technology you are funding is used effectively. ESPITS consult with teachers about the technology to use in their curriculum, such as Google Apps for Education. They assist all teachers in all aspects of e-card, Horizon, as well as EDSL. ESPITS prepare the teachers and the students for online tests in the e-card and are an integral part of the state-mandated SOLs. ESPITS often work with students by modeling lessons and assisting with projects such as the previously mentioned 5th Grade Global Awareness Technology Project. Assisting teachers with curriculum, working with the school's administration and technology selection, mentoring students, ensuring that the SOL and e-card testing is accomplished and that the results presented to the grade-level teams so as to improve student achievement. And as you have seen, participated in high-value, high-visibility, system-wide initiatives. In short, if it looks like technology and smells like technology, chances are there is an ESPITS somewhere close by. Now, despite these wonderful and proven successes, you have decided to cut the ESPITS position and return the program to where it was years ago. This does more than impact the lives of the individuals and families of those positions being eliminated. It directly affects the functioning of the school and the implementation of millions of dollars of technology you invested in these schools. A computer or iPad are wonderful, valuable tools for education, but they benefit no one if they are left unplugged, gathering dust in the back of the room. As a group, your ESPITS are amongst your highest-educated, most-experienced staff members. Not only must they be certified teachers, often with decades of classroom experience, but they are also selected from a pool of the most talented and technically savvy applicants, many with masters and advanced degrees. They are the cream of the crop, your crop, doing what you charge them to do and doing it in an excellent, high-quality, professional manner. Don't turn back the clock on your efforts. Don't waste this incredible, valuable resource that you have created. I know that you have difficult decisions to make, but I'm asking you to restore the ESPITS staffing levels as soon as the funding is available. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Batty. Next is Ian Howell, to be followed by John Bame, and then Precious Crabtree. Mr. Howell.
Good evening, Board members. When I first started teaching in Fairfax County 18 years ago, there seemed to be two golden rules. And the first one was to create the best program so that every student could reach their greatest potential. And the second one was to hire the best and brightest people to make sure that those programs were successful. Now it seems like we dropped the ball on both those counts. By having some of the lowest salaries in the region, it's getting harder and harder to find the best and brightest to run these programs. I have an example. My daughter has been in Fairfax County for three years now. Only two of her five teachers in three years at an elementary school were actually certified teachers. So 60% of her teachers so far, three years in the program, not certified. So all that is going to undermine rule number one, which is make the best programs. Even if we had the salaries, rule number one is being undermined by increased class sizes. The principal at my school has already had to make cuts to two award-winning, nationally-recognized programs, and decide which longstanding beloved teacher is going to have to lose their job potentially and have their family suffer. She's forced to play an ever-more-difficult numbers game that hurts the students and employees, but also hurts a very successful school culture. What's infuriating for all this, for teachers, and truly infuriating, is that the teachers are never included in this game. We're never asked what we would cut. We were never asked what we would actually give up. We're not asked what's redundant. We're not asked what programs actually help us. So if we were asked, we would probably say something like e-card. You can do that through BlockBart. Why? If you can do it through Blockboard, and you're already paying them millions, why pay e-card? They might tell you that certain specialists, for example, have never given teachers anything really they didn't already know. I'm sorry to say, I've been in the classroom for 18 years, and I can't think of a single time I got something from a specialist that I hadn't already discovered myself through one of my colleagues, because colleagues actually talk, and we share information. They might tell you that tremendous sums of money spent on additional cluster or county oversight, so-called innovation specialists or outsourced in-services, could actually be done in-house. We have hired some wonderful people. We have people with master's degrees, with doctorates, people that are on the front lines. We have administrators who have master's degrees and doctorates. They are on the front lines, actually in the classroom doing the work, not some specialist who wrote a book somewhere, and great, they're saying they're an expert, but they're in the classroom in 15 years. Why not have people who are in the classroom give the in-services? All right, we may not have the cash to match the salaries, but cutting programs due to class sizes, that cuts dreams and opportunities. Already, like I mentioned, a couple of nationally-known programs have been cut at my school or in the process of being cut. You cut that out, and what are you left with? You're left with reading, writing, arithmetic, and okay, great, every school can offer that. But if you want to be exceptional, you have to keep some of these innovative, interesting programs alive. If the county insists on trying to get first-class and coach, which seems to be what the rhythm is here, got to be reminded that the teachers need to be involved in discussion, ask them what they really need in the front lines. Also, you need to be reminded constantly that it's all about the student. It's not about what keeps this big educational machine running, or what keeps all these so-called experts employed and selling their books.
Thank you, Mr. Howell. Next is John Bame, to be followed by Precious Crabtree, and then Debbie Fargo. Mr. Bame.
Well, I'll tell you what. I had a speech ready, and it was a winner. I threw it out, and based on the performance, the students here are completely rewarded. So it's not rehearsed. I put myself in my students' position. I don't know if I'll ever do that again. I run under pressure, and I think it'll fit the time limit. Here it goes. Mr. Moon, it was very gracious of you to note how impressed the student speakers were. I could not agree more. Look at what we have. You want to talk about the wealth in Fairfax County? They are the true measure of our worth. In my English class, I promote the notion of listening attentively, taking notes, and being prepared to ask questions. So I thought I would take that cue tonight, listen attentively, take notes, put some questions together. I took my first note of a student who wants to sing her heart out, feel that she is worth something. Don't all of us want her to feel her worth? What are we doing here if not that? She was followed by a student bound for Davidson, not bad, who reminds us that a class you love is what gets you through the day. A simple question: Remember those times? It worked for me. Student who found confidence through debate and other electives and feels that FCPS needs to meet its stated mission to respond to each student's individual needs. Right on. Don't we agree that achieving a student-centered mission is what we're here for? Student bound for Stanford, not bad. I couldn't make it. I was number one in my class. I could not get there. She got there. Student bound for Stanford who found inspiration through a program that is called Project Enlightenment. Imagine that, a class called Project Enlightenment. Who wouldn't want to take a class that sounds that inspiring? A student from a challenged school system who came to FCPS and found out what education was, and reminds us that there are many, many families who are here for that education. Does anyone think they're here for the traffic? The student who tells us that it was the electives that made the difference. High school is stressful. It is. And it's hard to find out where our passions are. But that's what she's in school for. Shouldn't all students find their passion when they're young? The student who celebrates the leadership that makes dramatic arts a tangible, palpable, motivating factor that has guided her in her high school career. My question is, why should she have to deal with all the drama over funding and cutting classes? Let's make it possible for that student and others to find drama in class, not being unable to attend one. A student who says that we are known as one of the best school systems in the country is not just about core academic classes. He reminded us that drama also involves public speaking, a host of skills essential for success in life. Don't you agree that electives aren't just extras, and they can help develop skills that are determinants in success? If I wasn't good at drama in high school, I couldn't have written this, and I couldn't get on my chair to give the speech. A series of questions here that echo what was heard, but here's the closing of my statement. Hang on a second. My question is, with all due respect, were you listening? And I know the answer to that one. I know you were. Who could miss that? My next question is, what are you willing to do to make sure these voices are not snuffed out? The lights do not go out on their collective futures. I believe there are dollars to fund these invaluable programs, to pay teachers what they're worth. Note, they all refer to teachers, the value of teaching of it's up to them, they would give us their raises. We all know the money's there. We all know it's hard, but we're counting on you.
Thank you, Mr. Bame. Next is Precious Crabtree, to be followed by Debbie Fargo, and then Nicholas Nicolaidis. Ms. Crabtree.
Good evening, Deputy Superintendent Paris, Chairman Moon, and School Board members. In a recent Gallup report on education, I read that among 12 different types of job studies, teachers were the least likely to agree with the following statement: "At work, my opinion seems to count." I was not shocked by this finding, but I was saddened because this is the perception is all too familiar to teachers in FCPS. Last month, the Board of Supervisors once again showed us that our voices do not matter as they chose to not adequately fund our school system. Their decisions affect our school system, our students, and our vitality as educators. While I personally have lost faith in the county supervisors, I'm not sure where I stand with you. For many years, my colleagues and I have come before you to express our concern over financial struggles and our workload, but nothing's really changed. So I have to ask you, do the voices of your employees matter? Do I matter? When I answered my calling to teach 18 years ago, I believed that I would be afforded a salary that would allow me to help support a family and the professional autonomy to meet my students' needs. After almost two decades in my classroom, I haven't neither. My take-home pay is actually decreasing, and my administrative workload that has little to do with the act of teaching continues to stifle my talent as a teacher. I hope you understand that your best resource isn't the state-of-the-art technology, perfectly-manicured football fields, or even beautiful facilities like Gatehouse. It's me, and it's my colleagues. It is the people who interact with students every day and make a difference in their lives. FCPS teachers are gifted professionals with ambition, creativity, and a passion to make a difference. The longer they are made to feel that they have no voice in improving their profession, the more likely it is that they will leave for roles in which their opinions actually do count. In doing so, they take their talent, their experience, and their dedication with them, and they leave behind the students that they love. We deserve action that demonstrates our voices are being heard. Amid the challenges we face as a system, I still believe that with Dr. Garza's leadership and our belief that teachers should have professional autonomy, we have the potential to collaborate on lifting our school system to the top once again. Please take the steps needed to empower your employees, even if that means taking a personal leap of faith and trusting that we are FCPS' most valuable resources. Provide a step increase for employees, enlighten our administrative workloads so that we can focus on what we love to do and what we do best. Demonstrate that our voices do matter and that you value us as professionals. I know you've been handed a challenging task, but now more than ever, we need you to rise above the static and lead us to become a strong school system once again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crabtree. Next is Speaker number 44, Debbie Fargo, to be followed by Nicholas Nicolaidis and Mukul Gupta. Ms. Fargo.
Hello, how are you all tonight? I do have some comments planned, but they're not as formal as some of my previous colleagues. But I want to commend my colleagues that have been here, and I'm going to, I want to reiterate some of the things that they've said, but I want to add a little bit more to. And I also commend our students for speaking so highly and representing us so well in Fairfax County. I have been a teacher for 11 years in Fairfax County and love my job, love my students. As a matter of fact, I was just sitting here thinking about how much I love it and how much these students have touched me speaking tonight. I actually received, and I might cry thinking about this, but I actually received a Mother's Day card from one of my students thanking me for helping them and being their mom at school and being everything that, you know, a mother could be and for taking the time to always be there for her. So it's a very treasured thing that I'm hoping that will, you know, last me for years to come whenever I'm down. But, so, success in the new economy, what does it entail? Taking SOL tests, AP tests, ACTs, SATs, and these are the things that our students and our schools are graded on or rated on. And we, as FCPS employees, are told that we are here to teach 21st-century skills and provide them with workplace readiness skills. So, but, we think about the classroom and what the students are concentrating on. Do we really emphasize collaboration, creativity, critical thinking? Are we really thinking that way? Not really. In a study that I just heard about recently from Harvard University, they claim that by the year 2018, only 33% of our jobs will require college degrees and about 57% will require jobs that need some sort of technical training, credentialing, those sort of things. So the formula would be education, the core subjects, plus technical training and credentials. In my department, we do offer outside industry certification credentials. I teach marketing. I've taught business before. I've been in industry before I came to teaching, so I have a wealth of information to give about being a business owner and what it takes to be successful in the economy. But, so how do we start giving kids these kinds of opportunities? Well, we start with programs like the ones that I'm involved in, but also the ones that are, we've been speaking about tonight, the arts, the performing arts, theater, things like Project Enlightenment, journalism, things that help these students be able to look at real-world situations and apply it to their lives. These people are professional, committed people, and they should be treated that way. So for all the teachers that want to pass along their passion, their commitment, and their experience, I would just ask you to please give them your support, the need to continue in their profession and the schools and the county that needs to be the back-on-top in education for students to be successful in the global marketplace today. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Fargo. Next is Nicholas Nicolaidis, to be followed by Mukul Gupta and Cheryl Binkley.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Nicholas Nicolaidis, and I've been teaching chemistry at McLean High School for the past six years. I want to convey tonight what has helped me as a teacher and what has not, and what I feel is helping the students and what does not. Two things have been primarily instrumental in my growth as a teacher. The first has been my time in the classroom, which includes my mentorship under an experienced teacher at McLean. The second has been the informal interactions with my fellow teachers. It takes many years to become a master teacher, and it is primarily the experiences that you have in the classroom that will make you one. Besides our own classroom experiences, we have the experiences of our colleagues. Teachers do not need to be told to collaborate. We do so naturally, sharing experiences, curricular materials, and advice. So that's really the positive, that in the classroom, I learn how to be a good teacher and I talk to my colleagues. Now, what has not been particularly useful or even detrimental to me as a teacher and to my students? I have a list of here. SOLs are standardized testing. Now, each one of these is a subject in its own. I'm just going to list them. Large class sizes. The newest evaluation program for teachers, which takes so much of our time. Ecart, in-services, even smart boards. Now, I list them from detrimental to maybe just a waste of money. And this goes to Mr. Howell's point that if anybody would ever come and ask us anything, maybe they could have said, "Do you want a smart board in your room?" And maybe I would have said, "Not really, not this year. Let's see how other teachers are using it." And maybe we would have saved a couple thousand dollars or hundreds of thousand dollars across the county. My main point is this: In times of budgetary constraints and even in times of plenty, spend money on those things that are important, that really make a difference in the classroom. Don't let go of talented young teachers to keep a program like Ecart. Don't fire art or music teachers to keep someone whose work may be to plan the next in-service. Don't allow classrooms to become larger so that FCPS can buy more smart boards or some other technological device, or hire some educational consultant to run a seminar for teachers who have a million things to do and would rather be doing those things. Why keep spending money on standardized tests like SOLs when doing so works at cross-purposes with creating an educational experience with teachers' critical thinking and love of learning? I am a chemistry teacher. Give me a classroom, computers that work, a good internet connection, a copier so I can print materials for my students, textbooks, equipment and chemicals for my labs, and let me teach. I promise I will grow each year. I will keep trying to make my lessons more interesting and with greater clarity. I'll keep improving. Most everything else is either at best unnecessary, won't be missed, or a distraction from what I would need to accomplish, or at worst, has a negative impact on the student's education. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Nicolaidis. Next is Mukul Gupta, to be followed by Cheryl Binkley and Michelle Menepace. Mukul Gupta? Okay. How about Speaker 47, Cheryl Binkley?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My condolences for having to listen to this long litany. I appreciate your patience. My name is Cheryl Binkley. I've taught for Fairfax County Public Schools for 15 years, English and some theater. I carry six certifications, including Special Education and Advanced Academics. I'm not an unusual teacher, not Teacher of the Year, not even Teacher of the Month. You employ thousands like me. And for a long time, I loved teaching. Each year was an adventure. We discovered each student's needs and helped him go as far and as fast as they could. It was my passion. It felt like we went where no man had gone before. For many years, students who came to me having only made six years' progress each year would make one to two years' progress in reading that year. Students who came having made a year's progress in the past would make two to three years' progress on the Gates-McGinnity reading exam. Today, though, I spend most of my time in high stress, feeling I can't complete the tasks that are assigned to me. Mostly, my students make a year's progress, but occasionally, that's hard to accomplish because of test prep and other needs. The reason is my options have been narrowed by the loss of time in the workload and the loss of curriculum options. Over the last five to six years, intrusions into how and what we teach have become progressively invasive. Everything must be aligned to standards and high-stakes tests. No one can veer even slightly from the designated agenda, where once, an evaluation took two to three hours every three years. Now it's 10 to 15 every year. The time once spent aligning to student needs is now taken with school improvement teams. The number of common assessments have gone from two to four or more per year, where once we reported monthly to parents, now it's every two weeks. Our individual planning time is consumed by PLCs, CLT meetings, and other county-required meetings, and we are told, "This is best practice. You must align." Because of salary freezes, like six of the seven teachers on my hallway, I began to work a second job, teaching as an adjunct at Nova, and stayed up most long nights to meet my obligations for grading and data collection, and hopefully, the proposed step raise will eliminate that. I can no longer say, "I love teaching," not the way I'm commanded to teach now. I cannot help my students soar or travel new galaxies while working under the limits and the heavy weight that we suffer. Instead of a starship captain, I feel like Picard in the episodes where he fought the Borg, relentlessly told, "Assimilate. Resistance is futile." I want to love teaching again. I don't want to be in the double bind that psychologists say breaks human beings, and our teachers are near that breaking point because they have no good options. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Binkley. The next speaker is number 48, Michelle Menepace, to be followed by 49, Louise Epstein, and number 50, John Williams. Michelle Menepace.
Good evening. I'm speaking to you tonight as a citizen with a variety of experiences that have influenced my views. I've been a member of Supervisor McKay's Budget Advisory Group since its inception. I'm vice chair of the Community Action Advisory Board and past president of the County Council of PTAs. These and other volunteer opportunities have given me a wide view of the impact of our county's budget decisions. The one inescapable conclusion that I draw from these experiences is the need for sustainability in both our government and our school spending. We've seen the significant benefits achieved through the efficiency, savings, waste reduction that's been recommended by the supervisor's independent auditor, and I urge you to rethink the tremendous value in such independent evaluative evaluation and the processes recommended to the supervisors by the Lee District Budget Group. Thoughtful, independent, objective analysis is just one brick in the foundation of FCPS's sustainability. As a member of the CAB, I've seen how our most vulnerable populations must rely on the sustainability of our county finances. Economically disadvantaged students have needs that schools cannot overlook, and I worry that changes to needs-based staffing formulas will leave these vulnerable children behind. Please consider a fund allocation model that's more nuanced, allowing for the unique requirements of each school's population, rather than formula-driven. During a recent budget work session, I heard a couple of you asking how to better advocate for FCPS in funding. I was pleased to hear one of you remind her colleagues of the constitutional duty to set policy and ensure that the schools run with maximum efficiency. While presenting and adopting a needs-based budget is legislatively mandated, so too is the requisite oversight of efficient operations. Maximum efficiency is another brick in FCPS's sustainability foundation. The Lee District Budget Group has been urging FCPS to present a budget that explicitly connects needs, not wants, with accountability. Until citizens see programmatic and departmental valuations next to their costs, we're unable to assess their value, nor will be able to say with any certainty what our county's student needs from our schools. Needs connected to outcome further strengthen sustainability. Finally, a couple of years ago, a new requirement for graduation went into effect in Virginia. All students are now required to complete a personal finance course. They learn how to balance their checkbooks, to plan a budget, manage credit, in other words, to live within their means. Like all of us around our kitchen table, students are taught to prioritize making tough choices that life forces on us all, to understand the difference between must-have and nice-to-have, including planning for a future that we can maintain. We need you to ensure that all aspects of school expenditures are models for our youth, that they are sustainable today and for the years to come. Thank you.
For the sake of the public, I will mention that for every program in FCPS, there's a webpage and there is a link from that page to the financial behind it. Next is Louise Epstein, to be followed by John Williams.
Good evening, School Board members and Dr. Paris. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of the Fairfax Education Coalition. We were founded in 2009 to advocate for improved transparency, community engagement, and accountability in your decision-making process. Every year, you spend plenty of time agonizing over the budget. So tonight, we're going to suggest a way to reduce your workload. However, to get there, you'll need to invest some time now in order to save time later. Before your next budget work session, please compare the approved to actual expenditures and revenues for prior years. Look at the total amounts recognized in past mid-year, third quarter, and year-end budget reviews, and then compare the actual versus the approved and the revised expenses for fiscal year 2014. In the past, you typically had more money at year end than you projected in May, and then you use that money in part for purchases such as online math textbooks. With a closer look now, you may find more flexibility in your approved budget for next year. We want to applaud Dr. Garza for starting to move this needle in the right direction. We're happy with her decision to adjust the compensation assumptions to partially take into account savings from likely turnover and vacancies. We applaud her decision last month to use more realistic assumptions in developing recommendations for next year's approved budget, which reduced costs from student enrollment and demographics by 6.3 million, reduced health benefit costs by 4 million, increased state revenue assumptions by 30 million, and increased state sales tax revenue assumptions by 2.1 million. Those four changes in assumptions alone added up to $42.4 million for your fiscal year 2015 budget. If you use even more real- If you use even more realistic budget assumptions, then you will also reduce your debate over structural deficits, in addition to providing you with more flexibility when you vote later on this month. With estimates that are closer to actual expenses, you will decrease the amount of predictable variances on recurring revenues and recurring expenses that are converted annually into so-called one-time funds, and instead, you will have more money to use in your fiscal year 2015 approved budget. We thank you for your consideration, and we hope these comments provide you with some food for thought that you can use to make your jobs less stressful this month and also in July. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Epstein. The next speaker is John Williams. Before I hand it over to Mrs. Reed, I'm just going to check back to see if any of the speakers who were earlier in the list have arrived. Taj Rauk, Marie Baranadke, Nikki Lee, Kareem Dumar, Aiden Behringer, Matthew Howard, Wolf Glick, Caitlin Shenvert, Mukul Gupta. Okay, well, if those folks show up, you get a chance before we end things here. So now, I'm going to turn it over to Vice Chairman of the Budget Committee, Mrs. Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Valcoff. If anyone is following along, we are on number 50. We'll call Mr. Williams in a moment, but I'll also review the rules. Each speaker is allotted three minutes, and to be respectful of everyone, we ask that you stay within that time limit. The Deputy Clerk will start the timer when you begin to speak, and you will be able to see the time remaining on the clock on the podium. The buzzer will sound at the conclusion of your three minutes. Three names and their speaker numbers will be announced at a time. When you hear your name and speaker number, please move closer to the front of the auditorium so you'll be ready when it is your turn to speak. If speakers are not here when their name is called, those names will be called again at a later time. There will be an opportunity for individuals to speak. If there are no-show speaker slots remaining at the end of the hearing, after all the registered speakers have addressed the board, we will announce whether there are any no-show slots available. For this, we ask that you state your full name at the time you speak. After you have spoken, please see the Deputy Clerk so she may collect your contact information for the record. Throughout the evening, you may notice board members leave the table at times, but they have access to a TV that is broadcasting the public hearing. What number are we on, folks?
50.
Thank you. Okay, yes. Good, you are paying attention. All right, number 50, John Williams, to be followed by Wilma Bowers and Carolyn Hemmenway.
Hello, everybody, and thank you so much again for your patience and listening to all the comments. I know that it's been a long evening. My name is Wilma Bowers, and I am the mother of two FCPS children, Said, who's 19, and a freshman at JMU, graduated last year and marries a sophomore at McLean High School. I'm also the current PTSA president of McLean High School, and I know that you've had a large contingency from McLean here tonight. We've been traveling in a pack. We've traveled in a pack from the Board of Supervisors to the school board. I firmly believe, one other point I want to make, not only am I the PTSA president, but I'm also a small business owner in Fairfax County, and I pay over $50,000 a year in county-related taxes, so I am very motivated to be an informed citizen. And with that, I firmly believe that our county is made economically strong by a really strong school system. There's no question, I don't think there'd be any disagreement with that. We can give our kids, however, the best buildings, fill them with the latest technology, the best textbooks and stellar curriculum, but without the best teachers, all those things are for naught. That is why, as you've heard from our earlier speakers tonight, we must change the course for our teaching staff in Fairfax County. I applaud the earlier comments about changing the structure of the job, that lady who spoke a few speakers before me, but I also want to add my voice to the recommendation that we make teacher salaries the top priority in the budget this year. I know you've heard from the teachers that have already spoken that 70% of our teachers at McLean High School have second jobs to make ends meet, and this is just beyond deplorable to me as a working parent myself. I do not agree with the Board of Supervisors' funding, and I have articulated that very clearly to them in writing and verbally, and I will continue to do so. However, I do want to also note that as I've met with various Board of Supervisors, I've been disheartened to get the sentiment that they have a lack of trust with the school system. I'm hoping that our new superintendent, who I have been very impressed with thus far, and the hiring of the new FCPS auditor will help increase this trust, but in the meantime, you are left with the very difficult situation, as is Dr. Garza, to manage within this inadequate budget. I know your job isn't easy, and while FCPS teachers' main objective is to educate our children, I also want to reinforce that they provide our children with a connection to a supportive adult. And according to our own FCPS Resiliency Program, that helps positively impact domestic violence, homelessness, drug abuse, mental health and more, so I respectfully ask for you to please make competitive teacher salaries the top of your priority. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Carolyn Hemmenway, followed by Isabel Brazil and Sung Hix.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Hemmenway, co-founder and Director of Fairfax Zero Tolerance Reform, parent of three kids who have graduated before some of these measures that are coming up can be implemented, and also a small business owner. I'm glad you brought that up. Thank you, Dr. Garza, wherever you are, and Dr. Paris, for doing something I never thought I'd be here for, proposing a budget that prioritizes the well-being and education of children above everything else. Last January, I implored the school board to put our kids above our own conveniences and challenges, to say, "Yes, we can," instead of whining, "It's too hard." So I asked the board to fully fund Dr. Garza's budget and support the motivations behind it. First, it provides essential and long-needed compensation for teachers, but still not enough. You know the saying, "Mama ain't happy, ain't nobody happy?" Teachers with workloads they have control over and can manage within their contracts are happier. Teachers who are paid commensurate with their experience and expertise are happier. Teachers who are treated like professionals, given the respect of being heard and are included in decision-making are happier. Happy teachers make for happy students, and happy students make for engaged learners. I asked the board to support her on these initiatives, but move up step, step it up. All right. Turning to Discipline Reform, I also asked Dr. Garza, thanked Dr. Garza for proposing $1.8 million for in-school suspension support. Dear board members, you know we need this. If for no other reason than study after study shows this kind of approach pays taxpayers back exponentially, but then you need to make sure the money is actually spent on this, and you know why I'm emphasizing that. Just maybe, this can help prevent nefarious achievement gap from sliding even further backwards. Just possibly, we can get students the individual help they need. I applaud the work of Dr. Kim Dockry and her special services staff in beefing up the Restorative Justice Program and Discipline Alternative Matrix, but use of these should be required, not optional, or we will continue to have zero tolerance in some schools while wiser principals apply research-based, age-appropriate measures elsewhere. I'm hyped that you're going to start high schools later and remove or reduce sleep deprivation as a factor. I will tell you that a half hour is not enough. We need at least an hour. Drug use continues to be a stubborn problem that doesn't have to be. Kids use drugs and alcohol for hundreds of reasons, but approaches like second chance work. Kids are seeking suicide in tragically great numbers. Despite laudable efforts, too many adults in authority are denying the way our school systems are run. Kids are disciplined, and unreasonable demands made on them are significant factors. Parent notification remains a critical need that can save money by preventing escalation and getting parents effectively engaged. Many of the recommendations from last year's Discipline Task Force are not being implemented now, not robust enough, or should be mandatory. They will save you money. Please revisit those and use money from automatic carryovers to fund them. Thank you very much for your time and attention tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Hemmenway. Isabel Brazil, followed by Sung Hix.
Good evening. My name is Isabel Brazil, and I teach French at McLean High School. I've been working in education for 25 years, both as an administrator in private school and as a teacher in public school. Actually, I went back to school when I was in my 30s to get a master's in education to be able to teach in public school. So I've now taught in public school for 19 years, and I'm here to talk tonight, both as a parent and a teacher. In 2000, I lived in LA and I taught at LA Unified School District. Unfortunately, as a family, we had to make the decision to move. We could not envision putting our young children into public school there. Why? Because what used to be an outstanding school district, LA Unified School District, became a broken system which had been totally deserted by all the middle-class family. And since I believe in public education, I refused to have to send my children to private school while teaching in a public school. So I did several months of research, looking at many possible places to live throughout the U.S. The best I found, and I really did good research, was all across the way in a county named Fairfax. I made phone calls, we hired a realtor, and we were convinced we made an excellent decision when we purchased our home in McLean. At first, I was very impressed. Beautiful schools, new books, CD-ROMs every year, top-notch technology, and also top-professional and dedicated teachers, as well as decent-sized class. I had a great environment to teach, and my children had great school to receive a first-class education. Now, however, 13 years later, the picture is very different. My salary has been the same for the last five years. I'm struggling to make ends meet. Like many of my colleagues, I have to supplement my income to pay my bills. I have to tutor and actually also to share my home with a roommate, and I still have no idea how I'm going to send my two children, one of them is a junior, to college. Around me, I see a lot of colleagues very demoralized, some have two additional jobs to be able to live in Fairfax, the youngest one working out of the profession. So I see a county where the priorities seem all wrong. We want to look good on the outside, but it feels that the backbone of our system is collapsing. Money is put in books that are not used, smart boards, brand-new buildings for administrative staff. Meanwhile, class sizes are swelling, classes are being cut, teachers feel totally devalued, and top teachers are leaving. At this rate, how is the situation going to look in a few years? What has happened? Is Fairfax on its way to become a broken system like LAUSD? I'm wondering how such an embarrassing situation can happen in the third richest county in the U.S. And more importantly, how can we fix it before it's too late? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Sung Hix, to be followed by Michael Dennis and Pamela Conde.
Hello, I'm Korean and a full-time mom of two kids. They are six and three years old. I moved to the States after I got married about eight years ago. The first few years, I didn't have a car and was totally dependent on my husband. As an immigrant, putting and supporting kids in the school system here was not easy because it is difficult from the system in my country. I wasn't very able to register my first kid in preschool because I didn't know the registration process. I heard about the Korean Early Returnee Program from the mother of my child classmate. There was a long wait, about eight months, before I had a chance to take the class. This program is not only for kids, but also teaches important information about the public school system that all Korean immigrant parents must know, like kindergarten registration. It's nothing, but it's really big. It was big for me because I didn't know when I needed to do it. Public safety and etiquette between different cultures. I believe the Korean Early Returnee Program also helps kids smoothly adjust to school and teaches us, parents, how we can support kids. I really appreciate that Fairfax County Public Schools provides this wonderful program for minority immigrants like me. I hope this program runs long enough so many more Korean parents can benefit from it. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Dennis, to be followed by Pamela Conde. Michael Dennis? Pamela Conde?
I stand before you wearing many hats. The Westbrier PTA President, the Louise Archer PTA County Budget Liaison, our PTA leadership and membership has been fighting for full funding for Fairfax schools. We want to maintain high-quality teachers by paying our experienced teachers appropriately. We support the step increase for staff. We also have very large class sizes in Vienna Elementary Schools, including Westbrier and Louise Archer. We oppose any class size increase. I just looked at this, the average with the increase, the average for K, I'm sorry, 1 through 6, will be 27 kids at Westbrier. We routinely have more than 30 kids in a classroom. Often, those are the kids, the older kids, and they're in trailers to make it even worse. We thank you for the proposed trigger solutions, but it's not nearly enough to compensate for large class sizes like that. We should be working to reduce class size. Class size should not even be on the table as an increase, especially in the earlier years of elementary school. It should not be an option. I know it's an easy fix because it's an easy way to save money, and unfortunately, we didn't get as much as we would have liked in our fight for full funding, but it should never be an option, never. We cannot continue to cut costs by harming children themselves. My daughter, Gabby, last year, when she was a kindergartner, was in one of those classes of 29, but for state caps, when the extra child moved into town in February, they were moved to a class of 20, which is what the numbers look like now, but up until that point, it was a class of 28 and 29 kids, and they were forced to move in February because we weren't able to get a teacher earlier on in the year, because, you know, class-size averages are so much higher, even in kindergarten. It's not the way we should be in Fairfax County. I also stand here with my third hat as the Vice President of Advocacy for Fairfax County Council of PTAs. We fought for Fairfax schools. We'll be there again next year for the state fight and for local to continue doing the collaboration, the advocacy and education to make sure that our supervisors know and our state delegates know, and we stand with you as partners. With that said, I turn to my second page, which is where I say, "We stood before you in January, and again, we take issue with that class size increase." On a personal note, I have three children in Fairfax County schools, and they are all very, very different, as are the 27 average kids or the 30 kids in any given classroom. We send you our children, 190,000 or so others like my children, for seven hours a day. Your teachers see them for more than I do every single day. We trust you with them. You...
We safely transport thousands of students each day on one of the largest school bus fleets in the country. We maintain over 200 facilities to provide a comfortable, functional, and secure environment for instruction. We provide thousands of students with one and sometimes two nutritionally sound meals every day. We perform the administrative tasks, both at the schools and at the central offices, that an organization the size of FCPS is going to require, and we carry out many other functions too numerous to mention. Support employees do these jobs so that the teachers can do their jobs educating the children. One last point I'd like to make. Approximately 1,750 instructional and support employees, including myself, will not be eligible for the steps since we are in longevity on the salary scale. While the ideal situation would be a step increase with a market-scale adjustment, I realize that the budget may not support this. So I would like you to consider a one-time bonus of between $500 and $1,000 for those employees. I believe this will have a lesser impact on the budget since it will not increase the base salary. What it will do is provide these employees with a little bit of financial support to face the inevitable increase in the amount we will pay for benefits next calendar year. Again, on behalf of all of the support employees, I would like to thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Michelle Longo, followed by Lauren Ashley Villa and Haji Kim.
Thank you. My name, again, is Michelle Longo. I'm the curator of education at Gatsby's Tavern Museum and the Apothecary Museum in the city of Alexandria, where I've had the pleasure of working with Project Enlightenment from McLean High School, which I know you've heard from a lot tonight. And I'm also a parent to children in Fairfax County. The budget that I saw outlines a big picture, claiming to continue to provide a tradition of academic excellence, but in practice, I'm concerned that when the budget decisions trickle down to the school level, the outcomes do not seem to be supporting the claims. In particular, Project Enlightenment at McLean High School stands out to me. As an elective class, it provides college-level reading, analysis, and even teaching skills that set education in this county apart. Specifically, Project Enlightenment provides a unique blend of STEM, applied history, and leadership building. We want teachers to be able to take students above and beyond the standards, pushing students to demonstrate mastery of the 21st century skills educators are working hard to instill and we all know are critical to success in college and beyond. While core and AP classes may strive to incorporate these skills, the reality is that electives are where we really see this type of teaching blossom and hands-on opportunities abound. And it is these electives that set the educational experience apart. This class has a track record, which you've probably heard about tonight, and proves the value of this class to the students themselves, but also to the community. Instead of electives like this that blend STEM with history, the arts, and leadership building being canceled due to budget cuts, we should be examining how to replicate this learning experience, which encourages students to really understand the content, foster a lifelong love of learning, and plant a desire to learn for the sake of learning and to even share this knowledge with others, which improves the community, not just the student. Beyond the impact on the students, I think this has a huge impact on teachers as well. The budget materials acknowledged we're losing teachers to other counties. And I applaud supporting teachers through better, more competitive salaries, but I don't think that's enough. If we want to attract and retain the best teachers, we need to create an environment that encourages and rewards teachers for thinking outside of the box to provide learning environments where students can really grow. It must be demoralizing to realize you can have a proven track record with a unique program only to see it suddenly cut. If results like this are not your intent, then maybe giving more direction in how to creatively use the budget to meet the county's educational goals at the school levels if they're needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Lauren Ashley Villa, followed by Haji Kim and David Edelman.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Ashley Villa, and I'm a high school teacher at South Lakes High School, home of the Seahawks, and darn proud of it. I'm a professional, and as such, I expect two things. I expect to be paid as one, and I expect to be treated as one. Fairfax Education Association is lobbying the state for increased educational funding. As the largest school system and the school board members of that system, you should be joining us. The cycle of grossly underpaying my profession has to stop. All we are asking for is to be compensated according to our skills, our education level, and years of service. We deserve a full-scale readjustment, not to fight over some piddly step. We need you to take action to pay what is fair. Lobby for us, stand by us, and prove your commitment with budgets that dramatically increase teacher and staff pay. Because I'm a professional, and as such, I expect to be paid as one. And I also expect to be treated as one. Colleagues, do you feel respected?
No.
Do you feel that they treat you in this county as a professional?
No.
Tonight, we have spoken before you because we demand to have our profession back, to let teachers be the thought leaders in both policy and curriculum. Teachers can solve the problems in our schools. If you just stop hiring consultants and middle managers, then you could pay us for it. As professionals, we deserve the leadership and the power to make the positive changes anyways. We should be deciding if kids are ready for an IB or an AP course, not their parents. We, the professionals, should be collaborating together on our terms, not filling out CT minutes or gathering data for administrators. Teachers should be deciding the grading scale, the start of the school day, the homework policy, and when students can redo assignments and tests, not parents, not community members, not even school board members, because we are the professionals. We got those master's degrees in education. And if you don't believe in this, then please, by all means, hire robots, because then apparently anybody can do my job. And if you need data to prove that giving teachers their profession back and their autonomy back is a great idea, then just look at Hong Kong, Singapore, Germany, and Finland. See how much they compensate their teachers and how much autonomy they have. Then look up their world ranking in education. Members of the Fairfax County School Board and community members, I want my profession back. Because giving teachers autonomy and paying them a professional wage is not only fair for me, it's what's best for students. I'm a professional, and I expect to be paid as one, but I also expect to be treated as one. Thank you.
I have Mr. Kim, followed by David Edelman and Martina Hohn.
Good evening. Good evening, dear Fairfax County School Board members. And I didn't know the Korean American gentleman is the Chair of the Committee. I'm very proud. And I didn't know this is that this is formal and it's very hard setting for me to speak, so bear with me. My name is Haji Kim, father of two children who is enrolled in the Korean Early Returnee Program and getting benefits from that program, and thank you for that support also. And, you know, I understand, I mean, you've been hearing, you know, the stories from the people about, you know, three hours, so let me just, sure and brief, the brief but clear. I'll give you a bar mile front, you know, I'd like to ask you for two things. The first is consider expanding this program. We are, I like to emphasize how important this program is to immigrant, to Korean American families. That's because we are different. So I've been living here for quite a bit, but, you know, we've been experiencing some discriminations, you know, bullied, and I like to sum that up as unfairness. So we have experienced unfairness. And that's just because we are different, right? I mean, I know I'm different. I look different. I sound different. I have accents, right? I may think different, so there's this total cultural difference, differentness. So how we can, how we can educate our, you know, the immigrant Korean American, not just Korean Americans, the immigrant, you know, American, the parents, such that their next generation is not experiencing the same thing that we have been experienced. So, and Korean Early Returnee Program is such a good program, it's an awesome program, that, you know, we've been going through, they are teaching us, you know, what to do, what not to do, what to expand, what not to expand, you know, going through all those case studies. And just, you know, just the duration of this course is 10 weeks, which is a very short period of time. It's just come by like this, and I mean, we definitely asking you for, you know, just consider, just expand this program for a longer time, or, you know, having more, you know, more sites. So I understand that there's like many families on Wainley's. I mean, I was kind of feel lucky that I was, the middle of this program is having benefit. But there's so many families, I mean, you're considering about, you know, more than 100,000 Korean Americans living in just, you know, Northern Virginia area by itself. I mean, this is definitely not, you know, enough program that is to support that many families. Which another thing is, like, I'd like to, for you to consider some, you know, not just this program, but not just for the Korean American families, but just for Dominican families. If you consider those, you know, you draw the border lines, like this, you know, under this line, worth support, but over this line, worth of support. I mean, those are the ones that, you know, you know, our Dominican families, you know, hard-working Americans, and they are the ones that who's contributing the most, you know, paying their fair shares. And, but are we getting attention? Are we getting, you know, fair benefit or, you know, care from our, the county, the state, and as a country? So I really, you know, argue that, I want you to think about that and, you know, you know, consider to, you know, just balance the budget. I know there's low-income families, the ones that who needs the most, but, you know, at the same time, you know, the middle of families who makes just above the limit, and you know, most of the, you know, Korean middle-income families, they are working 60, 80 hours just to support their family. I mean, they are not making enough money to send their child to, you know, the publicly, the running, the childcare program. So, I mean, they need help too. So, I mean, I know you have, you know, budget limits and you have to make a fair decision for everybody, but I'm really asking you as an RCD and, you know, just, you know, thought about, you know, those people who need some support from you guys. Right? Thank you very much.
David Edelman, followed by Martina Hohn and Lolita Menceno Smoke.
Good evening. My name's David Edelman. I am the Budget Chair for the Fairfax County Council of PTAs. I'm also a parent of a sophomore and a junior at McLean High School, and I was surprised to hear many of my children's contemporaries tonight. We are all very disappointed that we only got from the county 3% of the requested 5.7% increase in the transfer requested by Dr. Garza. And we realize that the school board now has ahead of it some very difficult decisions in terms of cost reductions. But we feel that we need to balance between this and increase in teacher salary and class size, that both of those issues are important as we try to balance the difficult budget we have in front of us. Although we are now in the process of completing the FY 2015 budget, I'm already thinking about and concerned about the 2016 budget. There are many structural deficits that we don't see an end in sight. This is the VRS, increased membership, increase in healthcare costs, and I don't see any solution right away in controlling these costs. We believe as soon as the FY 2015 budget process is complete, we should start working on the next one. It is our opinion that the $2.5 billion budget is very complex, and I feel that there are only a few handful of people who really understand the complete budget. And therefore, I believe that education is not only our key mission, but our key task when it comes to the budget. We suggest that we start with the Board of Supervisors. These need to be some forum for dialogue between the two boards. I know it's been tried, but we need to try again. Our proposal is to look at a county and the school budget as a whole, and to look at total compensation as a whole rather than bifurcated. This would include creating a mutually agreed-upon three-year plan on how to fund the budget, a budget that would hopefully address structural deficits and fair compensation for our teachers. The council is willing to help create an environment where the Board of Supervisors or its designees and the school board would be willing to get together to analyze the budget and come up with real solutions. This work might take many forums, and we believe that dialogue is what is necessary. Certain questions about the budget may seem unfair or unwarranted, but nonetheless, I think we need to address them. The primary reason they need to be responded to is that the budget is so complex, and I think that the public can easily get confused between competing arguments on issues. The only way that these issues can be addressed is with clear and fair analysis. I hope that, to work with you on the 2016, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edelman. Number 62, former school board member, Martina Hohn.
School board members, Dr. Garza, staff, I am Tina Hohn, founder of the Coalition of the Silence. COTTS speaks for those children who are underrepresented at the highest levels of academic achievement and overrepresented in discipline. African-American children, Latino children, poor children, children with disabilities, they are at the heart of COTTS. We fight for them because no one else does. Collectively, COTTS kids comprise 30% of the student body, that is, over 50,000 children. They are the largest single stakeholder group in this county. You cannot ignore them, and you cannot ignore us. We knew this moment would come. We know the Board of Supervisors disappointed you. You can blame the Board of Supervisors for this budget, but we will not give you a pass. We blame you. You set this stage. We did not want to engage in a zero-sum game. Sadly, many of the people who spoke before us tonight are engaging in a zero-sum game. We don't want to take one program from one child and give it to another, but we know that something has to be done for COTTS kids. We support our teachers. We think they should be paid fairly. We know that they have a workload challenge, but their needs cannot come at the expense of learning time for children. We support healthier later start times. They matter especially for COTTS kids, given the strong evidence that early start times impact achievement and contribute to behavioral difficulties. And at the most basic level, if COTTS kids miss the bus, they miss school. We support foreign language, we support the goal of children being able to speak multiple languages by the end of their time at Fairfax County, but it has to be done right, which includes preserving home languages that so many COTTS kids speak. We agree, we frankly support every bell and whistle in Fairfax County. The arts are incredibly important, but they have to be fairly accessible to every child, and we know that's not the case. COTTS kids need more time in school. You must expand pre-K. You must expand, restore full-day Mondays for the needy schools. would come. We know the Board of Supervisors disappointed you. You can blame the super Board of Supervisors for this budget, but we will not give you a pass. We blame you. You set this stage. We did not want to engage in a zero-sum game. Sadly, many of the people who spoke before us tonight are engaging in a zero-sum game. We don't want to take one program from one child and give it to another, but we know that something has to be done for COTTS kids. We support our teachers. We think they should be paid fairly. We know that they have a workload challenge, but their needs cannot come at the expense of learning time for children. We support healthier later start times. They matter especially for COTTS kids, given the strong evidence that early start times impact achievement and contribute to behavioral difficulties. And at the most basic level, if COTTS kids miss the bus, they miss school. We support foreign language and we support the goal of children being able to speak multiple languages by the end of their time at Fairfax County, but it has to be done right, which includes preserving home languages that so many COTTS kids speak. We agree. We frankly support every bell and whistle in Fairfax County. The arts are incredibly important, but they have to be fairly accessible to every child, and we know that's not the case. COTTS kids need more time in school. You must expand pre-K. You must expand, restore full day Mondays for the needy schools. You must create summer intercession programs, not just for remediation, but for enrichment. You have to eliminate out of school suspensions, confront the dropout crisis impacting Latino boys. You know that programs are unevenly distributed in this county. Kids in different zip codes get different schools. You know that there are shameful disparities in access to GT centers, full IB diplomas, and of course, admission to TJ. You must confront the inequality of opportunity that exists in Fairfax County. We know you do not have enough money. We wish the Board of Supervisors had given you more money. But ultimately, this is not about money. This is about having the will. This is about moral courage. This is about demanding of yourselves that every child in this school system have a fair opportunity. And that is what we are calling on you to do. You know what you need to do. You know where the programs are. You know where the money is. Please do not forget COTTS kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hohn. I have Lolita Menceno Smoke, followed by Avis Ketchings and Sharice
Good evening, Honorable School Board Members, Dr. Garza and Staff. Buenas noches. Ano hasayyo. Mr. Moon. Did you know that $2.5 billion covers the military budget of a quarter of the countries that make up the continent of South America? Amazing how affluent our county really is when only its public school budget is $2.5 billion. Yet there is a catch, because here in Fairfax County, it matters which zip code a child happens to live in when it comes to getting the highest quality education and development opportunities that money can buy. The public school system is expected to provide the same opportunities for all children, so they may compete on a level playing field to achieve their own outcomes, but that does not exist here. Most folks that move into our county know about the great reputation of its top-rated public school system and rarely get to live or witness the disparity, as they don't buy or rent homes in those poor zip codes. So here we are, all very smart, highly educated professionals that know the many issues confronting the county, with the exponential changes in demographics, the poverty levels, and the ever widening achievement gap, and yet, nothing has improved over the past 10 years. Why? What happened to those critical thinking skills and that great American ingenuity that innovates solutions that awe all of mankind when at our greatest point of need? I don't believe it is a matter of lack of sufficient money or know-how. You already know what needs to get done right. I believe it's more lack of visceral heartfelt will, the will to be passionately accountable for finding solutions that breathe truth and life into. We believe it is a legal, political, and moral imperative to close the achievement gap. With all due respect to your professionalism and bestowed public trust, please allow all our children to receive the same quality of education and development opportunities to thrive at the level that their talents will lead them. Let's genuinely join in mind, in body, and soul to eradicate the extraordinary achievement gap for Hispanic, Black, economically disadvantaged students, and students with disabilities from Fairfax County, starting today. Thank you.
Avis Ketchings, followed by Sharice Glassman and Todd Cranford.
Good evening. I'm Avis Ketchings with Coalition of the Silence. Here we are again before you and wanting you to understand our need and our concern for FCPS to teach all children. It is so easy to make excuses why certain populations of kids don't succeed, but if we truly are a school system wanting equitable education for all children, then our budget and our programs should reflect that. Thank you for your action on one of the many recommendations we brought before you from the SRNR teams regarding suspension with support. This is a step in the right direction. Keeping kids in school rather than sending them home decreases their chances for becoming victims to the street. You can count on us to stay on top of this. We want to make sure that the staff appointed to this in-school suspension program will have the tools they need to produce good outcomes. They should have high expectations of these students. They should encourage these students and keep them account, hold them accountable for staying on top of their classroom assignments. I bet you the community and local businesses would love to partner with you by providing tutoring services for these in-school suspensions. Let us help you in making this a success. COTTS kids matter too. Our COTTS kids can be CEOs and principals and astronauts, military officers, nurses, but every achievable goal requires a plan and a firm foundation from the beginning. Every child wants to do well in school when they enter at age five. My niece Marley, she loves school. She attends Woodlawn Elementary, and each day she looks forward to learning something new. My prayer is that her passion will not be diminished because she does not have access to the same types of programs to help her succeed as students her age in different parts of the county. The academic achievement gap is a bad word, and it should be. We can't claim any victory here. Closing the gap should not be our goal, and we should not be satisfied with baby steps and Band-Aid coverings. The goal should be to close the achievement gap with measurable outcomes and results. Every quarter, we should be analyzing this data. Our COTTS kids are African-American, Latino, and economically disadvantaged. They make up nearly one-third of the student body, which is almost 60,000 children, with real faces and real heartbeats. They span across the county with a heavier concentration on the South Side, but just because their demographic location is different, doesn't justify lesser services. We are one school system. Find out what makes our kids tick and then teach to that tick. That's how you close the achievement gap, which can also result in decreasing the disproportion in the discipline gap. That's how you increase percentages of COTTS kids into your advanced academic classrooms. If I leave you with nothing else, I want you to remember that our kids, like Marley, matter too. Thank you.
Thank you. We are now on number 65. Sharice Glassman. Todd Cranford.
Good evening. Superintendent Garza, School Board Members and Staff, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. My name is Todd Cranford. I am the father of two children in the Fairfax County Public School System and a proud member of COTTS. We all know that the budget process is challenging under the best of circumstances, and that your task is only made more difficult by these daunting economic times. Like everyone else, I wish you had the resources to maintain and expand upon the wonderful, excuse me, upon the wonderful and important programs that FCPC offers. Alas, I know the reality is that you do not have the resources to fulfill your wish list, and you have to make painful cuts to many of the programs. I am heartened by Superintendent Garza's public statements regarding her commitment to educating all of Fairfax County's children, as well as your collective recognition that in order to improve upon FCPS's well-deserved reputation, that the system cannot fail the populations that need the most help. When I addressed you in February, I reminded you that your budget is more than a roadmap for spending. It is a very public statement setting forth your collective views and priorities on how best to apportion limited resources to educate this county's diverse student population. I also expressed my concerns that you seem to be making the allocation of, about the how you are making the allocation of your resources. We are all forced to do more with less in tough times, and I recognize that your decisions are not easy. Under the circumstances, I was hopeful that the cuts would be proportionate and across the board in order to be as equitable as possible. I am, however, disappointed that the budget access pain appears to be falling disproportionately on the children who can afford the cuts the least, the approximately 60,000 COTTS students in the system. Every child deserves an opportunity to succeed. This, of course, does not mean that every child's success will look the same. Students with special talent should be nurtured and given the opportunity to thrive and excel. And likewise, children with special needs should be given the same opportunities to thrive and excel. It just might not look the same as other students. I share your ideals and your vision of the, I share the ideals and dedication of the, of the teachers and administrators in Fairfax County, and I am determined to work with you and your colleagues to ensure that we collectively resist the temptation to betray these ideals of excellence and fairness. The consequences of doing so, both short-term and long-term, will inevitably lead to more fragmentation and mistrust. Access to a world-class education and the ability to thrive for COTTS kids, Black, Latino, and poor, are jeopardized by the lack of funding for the programs that are intended to support their success. Again, we must have the moral courage to, as Spike Lee might say, do the right thing. Thank you.
Next, we have Crystalin Solomon, Thomas Ahat, Aaron Doggett.
Hello. My name is Crystalin Solomon. I am a junior public relations major and business management minor attending Hampton University. I am the CEO of my own PR firm and president and founder of a youth-centered nonprofit organization. I am also a 2011 proud graduate of Mount Vernon High. I believe that I was able to achieve these successes more easily by having two college graduates as parents. While I attended MVHS, my parents were not struggling financially and were able to provide me with tutors, technology, and the support when I needed it most. However, this experience is different from many of my peers, many of them who represented the then 46% of MVHS students eligible for the free and reduced lunch program by having a lower income. I have recently learned that this number has grown. Their needs were so basic, yet so great. Most of their parents did not have their own transportation, and many of them had little to no access to computers, let alone internet for our homework assignments. This was our reality. During times of budget cuts, decisions would always disproportionately affect my friends, preventing them from joining or continuing numerous school programs, including college prep, as well as extracurricular activities. As students, we went to school board meetings, just like this one, and shared our concerns with you. Now I find myself here again, a year away from graduation, this time from college, pleading with you all once more to help close the achievement gap. Your website proudly and confidently states, "FCPS is committed to equal access and equal opportunity in all services and employment, to include its policies, complaint process, and program accessibility." Yet the same website displays the disheartening, if not embarrassing, data collected by FCPS, showing that the, the ever widening achievement gap, which is defined by you as, quote, "the difference between our highest performing subgroups, usually white or Asian, and all other subgroups of students." Unless anyone here honestly, and might I add ignorantly, believes that Black and Latino students are not as intelligent as white and Asian students, there is no reason to have these issues every year without the serious involvement on the part of FCPS. The fact that you publish the data on these issues every year, and the problem continues to worsen, proves that you know about it, but continue not to give it the attention it deserves. As an IB student who attended a school that has one of the largest minority populations in the entire county, there is no excuse for me to have gone to school for four years, including one of those years at West Potomac High, and only seeing the same four to five students of color during my entire high school career in these advanced classes. I challenge the school board not to forget any of its students, taking into consideration who it affects most when deciding on budget cuts and instituting new school policies. By allowing a record number of minorities to be left behind in our educational system, you are not only failing our young people, but failing our country. How can we expect anyone to be a productive citizen and compete with other nations on a global scale without making a way for all students to achieve? We cannot afford to leave students behind. Please do not fail us. Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas Ahat. Mr. Ahat, followed by Aaron Doggett.
Hello, School Board Members. I am Thomas Ahart. I have lived in Reston, Virginia since 1971. My two children attended and graduated from Reston Elementary, Middle, and High Schools. I served as the PTSA President at Langston Hughes Middle School and South Lakes High Schools. I have been a member of two county school board-created committees. One was a, on the high school course review, and the other was on minority student achievement. While my, while my children were in school, and since their graduations, I have been an active participant in community-based organizations whose mission is to support school, school board programs that seek to develop meaningful solutions to their underachievement outcomes for low-income and minority students in Fairfax County schools. One of my college professors, I have sinuses and everything else, so if I keep sniffing, I apologize for that. One of my college professors, Dr. Sam Halperin, is credited as an architect of the Elementary and School Education Act of 1965, that includes the Title I provision, which provides billions of federal dollars to help educate poor children. Dr. Halperin was the study director at the William T. Grant Foundation's Commission on Work, Families, and Citizens. He co-wrote the commission's report, 1988 report titled, "The Forgotten Half." This report examined how national and local communities' prosperity might be threatened by the 20 million people aged 16 to 24 who never go to college. I believe that statistic might be the same today. The report found that the problem is the jobs they get after graduating high school are the same jobs they had while in high school, citing such positions as retail clerk, fast food server, and stock boy. We all know the purchasing power of these jobs was declining in 1993 and continues to today. I believe the school, I believe school board budgets should always provide a level of financial support that provides solutions to these longstanding problems. This year, I have attended meetings of the school board and the Board of Supervisors regarding the 2015 school budget. At each of these, I have listened to school board members talk about their commitment to providing a quality educational experience for all students attending Fairfax County. But the 2015 budget does not adequately support such a pronouncement, and I want to cite three examples. The budget projects there will be a $10 million plus excess of funds to be satisfied, set aside for the 2016 fiscal year budget. The 2015 budget, while decreasing funding for programs and services for low-income and minority students, allocates $1.9 million to pay for the cost, pay the cost for students who choose to take AP courses for graduation certification.
Sir, could you try to finish up, please?
I will. I have, I have three more sentences. All students participating in the athletic, participating in athletic, artistic, and other self-reimbursement programs are required to cover the cost for all expenses associated with, with these activities that are not provided by the school system. Importantly, it does, it does not matter if they are members of low-income or middle-income and above families. I wonder, where is the logic of this kind of budget? Is the school board's budget commitment to low-income and minority students merely words on a paper? Only you, the members of the school board, can answer this question. And I want you to know, I much appreciate this opportunity to share these remarks with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Aaron Doggett, to be followed by Tracy Embry and Will Radel.
Good evening. I'll be speaking on behalf of the Coalition of the Silence. It is such an accomplishment to have a school system that's ranked among the greatest in the nation. I did some research, and I found out that Fairfax County is home to 11 of the top 47 high schools in the state of Virginia. It's also home to three of the top 100 schools in the nation, I mean, in state of Virginia, I'm sorry. Three, three of the top 100 schools in the nation, including one that's even in the top five. To me, that's amazing. And to know that I was a part of that school system was also very cool. However, it saddens me to know that all schools in this district do not have However, it saddens me to know that all schools in this district do not have access to the same educational programs and resources. Can you imagine how much more prestigious that FCPS would be as a whole if all the high schools had access to programs and opportunities as those eleven that I mentioned before? Is it fair that they don't? It is my belief that the emphasis should be put on the schools that are not doing well. We should spend our time motivating the students who are falling behind because they matter, too. There's an old saying that I'm sure most of you in this room have heard before, and that saying goes, "A chain is only as strong as its weakest link." How can we be strong when we have these links that are on the verge of breaking? Many times, it's the little things that can make a huge difference in the learning environment. I myself attended two Fairfax County public high schools for two years each, and I noticed many subtle differences that, to some people, may not matter, but to me, they made for a better learning environment. For example, the first school I attended had carpeted classrooms, you know, that dark hard carpet, similar to what's in here? Um, I'm sure some of you have seen it before, but anyways, when I transferred schools, my new school had white tile floors in every classroom. Now, you may be asking yourself, "Why does this matter?" So allow me to explain. Uh, white tile, in combination with white walls, the ceiling light, and natural sunlight, depending on the weather, of course, allowed for more light to be reflected that, when bounced off of the walls and floors, produced an abundance of light that gave way to a noticeably brighter working space, which really made a difference, at least to me. The school also had smart boards in every single classroom, whereas my first school was still using overhead projectors in the majority of their classes. Before I transferred, I'd only seen a smart board a few times, but having one in every classroom made the lessons more intriguing to me because I was fascinated by the technology. I found myself raising my hand more to answer questions because I wanted to see what it was like to write on a board and to learn how it works. Little things like that made me enjoy school more, but I just never understood why one school had these advantages and others did not, and they were both a part of the same system. It's been a while now since I've stepped foot in either of my old schools, and I'm sure that they both made improvements since my days as a student. But I'm also quite sure that there are still many differences that make some schools better, more attractive, and more learning-friendly than others, and I'll always wonder why that is. Kids come to school to get educated. Please allow them to do so by giving them a fair and equal chance at learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy Embry, to be followed by Will Radel.
My name is Tracy Embry, and I have sat and stood in support of the Coalition of the Silence, but have remained silent until now. I can no longer remain silent when I observe such blatant avoidance of duty with regard to closing the academic achievement gap. Crystalin Solomon already defined what the school board's website says the gap is defined as, but the website goes on to say, and I quote, "The achievement gap will be considered closed when the disparity for academic achievement between the two groups no longer exist. A commendable, admirable goal." You deserve applause. No, wait. There's still a gap. The gap remains in the double digits, and it's been that way at least since the start of the twenty-first century. So there's been ample time to have reached the goal of closing the gap. So why haven't you? Where's the urgency? Where's the accountability? Who's at fault? In the real world, people lose their positions based on this degree of failure, and rightly so. But maybe, just maybe, you really have no intentions of closing the academic achievement gap. Maybe your hope is we will remain silent, and you keep passing responsibility to the next school board. It's not like you don't have a mechanism for monitoring progress towards closing the achievement gap. You have an appointed body called the Project Management Oversight Committee, led by key officials in the superintendent's office, and championed by responsible cluster-assistant superintendents. I've reviewed some of your active initiatives to close the achievement gap, and I'll just comment on two of them. First, there's Project 1-4 that says you're developing strategies in order to graduate all FCPS students K through twelve. Really? And when exactly do you plan for this to happen? The last status update was April 2013 and says you need a full-time resource staff to support school implementation, and the status is yellow, which means it needs attention. So what next? It's been over a year. And then there's Project 1-22, which states that you will leverage knowledge of schools that are successful to close the achievement gap. Now, the status for this project is green, because in May 2013, the last time you had a status update, by the way, you note that initial training has been delivered, as if throwing more training at this horrific problem would miraculously fix it this go-round. Hmm. How can the status be labeled green if the gap is widening instead of closing? The gap needs to be closed, period. We will not be going away, nor will we be holding our tongues until it is.
Will Radel, to be followed by Virginia Fitzshea and Teri Hobson.
First, I want to thank Susan Quinn, Kristen Michael, and Dr. Garza. When I, as an average private citizen, approached you and shared an idea that might possibly help generate revenues for Fairfax County while helping families throughout our community achieve and fulfill their aspirations, I just wanted to say thank you for your openness in considering th- those ideas. Last week, on Thursday, I was here at this podium, and I had shared with you some concerns. I hope, in listening to the people who've invested time here with you, that you have found a voice. And on April tenth, when you were unable to advocate a savings of three-hundred thousand dollars so you can put to a higher priority at a cost of zero, it creates doubt in some of our minds that you are doing the work of applying all of our priorities most effectively. We're here because we, we equally share concern, and we appreciate your investment of time, but we need to move forward. You know, making that decision, a- as an example, falls short, and what we're looking at is some more advanced issues. As you know, Richmond creates a mandate, and they partially fund it. We call it LCI. There is a lack of equality among our school districts, among our communities, because there's a false perception in Richmond that localities pay taxes. As I shared with you on Thursday, sixty-seven-point-four percent of Fairfax County households have an income less than a hundred forty-nine thousand, yet Richmond has a history of thinking that we all belong to beloved Mars family. There are, as we are talking about with COTS, a lot of people in our community who are poor, who have a higher cost of living, who are, uh, having a lower income, and yet Richmond is doing nothing. I hope you find your voice for our community so we can unite at the state and local and school district levels. Thank you.
Virginia Fitzshea, Teri Hobson, followed by Tara Taylor.
Good evening, Ms. Reed, Dr. Garza, and members of the school board. Tonight, I am speaking on behalf of the Full School Days group, and we have sponsored a petition to advocate for an end to the Monday early dismissal policy. We believe that Fairfax should provide a uniform school day of six hours and forty minutes each day for the elementary school students. It's also a good idea to provide a minimum of five hours of planning time per week within the student day for every full-time teacher. I know that the Elementary School Master Schedule Committee will be presenting its proposals within the next couple of weeks. There is a possibility that the proposals might be cost-neutral, but the cost figures are not available yet. So I don't think you need, you can take the chance of forgetting to budget for the possibility that you might need to pay a little extra to improve the elementary school schedule. I believe we should commit to change now. I recommend that you budget two million dollars for increased assistance for the teachers in the elementary schools to strengthen the overall program for the elementary schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Teri Hobson, followed by Tara Taylor and Helen Zubalay.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Teri Hobson. I'm the Theater Arts Director at Woodson High School, and I'm the president of the Theater Arts Directors Association, which represents all the FCPS theater teachers, wrapping up my twenty-seventh year of teaching. Since I'm a theater teacher, I feel compelled to take you through a visualization exercise. So imagine, if you will, being on a ship. I know I, the other, he already made an allegory to ships, but, um, let's make it a cruise ship, because I feel like at this time of year and this time of night, we all could get behind that. It's a beautiful ship. It has lots of entertainment. It has great quality entertainment, a hu- a competent crew who takes pride in their work, and takes really good care of their passengers. The cruise line receives widespread accolades as being one of the best cruise lines in the world. Now, it's an excellent crew, but the captain has the big picture. The captain has the vision of the ship's destination and how to best get there. She makes sure that she provides a safe journey, and she ensures that the crew is following all the regulations in the process. When problems arise, it's the captain who can ultimately bail everyone out. Now, you can visualize the captain at the helm, but what if the captain is only steering the ship half the time? What if the time, if she isn't steering, there's a storm, or one of the crew members or passengers needs, needs her? Where does the ship head if no one is at the helm half of the time? Whether there are thousands of passengers or just a few, they deserve the same high-quality crews, right? The same can be said of theater and dance programs at FCPS. I'm speaking to you, obviously, this evening to ask you to reinstate the position of the theater and dance specialist to a full-time status. Theater teachers are a professional learning community of one in each middle school and high school, and the dance teachers, there are only four of them in the entire county. As logical as it may seem that the theater and dance specialist only supports fifty-nine teachers and over two-hundred-and-fifty productions per year in FCPS, this can't be about numbers. The theater programs in FCPS are essentially small businesses within our school and must have someone who can proactively address our specialized needs, including but not limited to safety, community outreach, and curriculum development. The theater and dance specialist is our captain. Cutting the theater and dance specialist position to half-time would be disastrous to the theater and dance programs in FCPS. It would negatively impact the classes, as well as the productions, both which are nationally recognized as among the best in the country. In addition to restricting timely access to a professional who can address immediate concerns about contracts, student safety, legal issues, and other pressing issues, if the school board makes the theater arts specialist position part-time, it would be difficult to find a qualified person to fill that part-time position. In his 2005 book, A Whole New Mind, Daniel Pink states that "The right brain qualities of inventiveness, empathy, joyfulness, and meaning increasingly will determine who flourishes and who flounders." Please consider that in a world that considers creativity to be one of the most important qualifications among those hiring, we must continue to support arts positions in FCPS. Thanks for your consideration.
Tara Taylor, followed by Helen Zubalay and Wes Johnson.
Hello, my name is Tara Taylor, and I'm from Kilmer Middle School. I haven't been involved with the fine arts, particularly theater, my whole life. I earned both my undergraduate and master's degrees in theater performance and have been privileged to work professionally. However, I always knew what I really wanted to do most in life, and that was teach theater. For me and many others, theater is this incredible tool. It provides and cultivates skills and creativity, collaboration, critical thinking, and communication. It allows students a better understanding in other curricula. It provides an understanding of the world outside of the classroom and community, both as a performer and an audience member. It teaches us about varying cultures, ideas, lifestyles, thoughts, empathy, and perspective. More than anything, it's a pathway for connection. Theater allows us to sit in a room of strangers and, without judgment, reach a mutual understanding without coercion or rhetoric. As a theater educator, I was drawn to FCPS because of its programming and reputation, something that makes our county unique and renowned in the, in the country. Now, as a theater arts educator for over ten years, I have observed theater benefit my students firsthand. It allowed an ESL student too shy to even speak in class fire the, find the desire and confidence to be the lead in our production of Once on This Island. It allowed a cat-beat special-needs student find a truly inclusive environment, both in the theater classroom and in our school production of Grease. It allowed a student whose parent lost their battle to cancer find a theater family. And it gave countless students, including myself, a reason to get up, come to school every day, and eventually discover the higher-level learner that they could be. We, as theater teachers, are one to a building. We are quite often not able to work in school-assigned CLTs or PLCs. We are responsible for maintaining the stage and theater facilities at our schools. We run the curricula of our classrooms and then implement large and year-round school programs open to all students in the building. Theater teachers also deal with community outreach, marketing, legal issues, cross-curriculum support, and more. With limited collaboration or understanding in our individual buildings, it is essential that a full-time theater and drama specialist be available as a resource so that we can continue to provide students with a performing arts education in a safe, legal, and high-quality manner. Theater educators also contribute an exorbitant amount of personal time to ensure that we have our students' programs and productions at the high quality. We do this because we believe and have passion for what we teach. We are concerned, and we are distressed, that the FCPS administration, the school board, and the Board of Supervisors, knowing this information, would consider reducing the theater and dance specialist position for the only fine arts programming with part-time representation and support. This past year, FCPS issued the portrait of a graduate. We ask, in this time, that you stand behind the vision statement, core beliefs, and goals, and provide an education for the whole child. We have, Holly, if you would step forward to Dr. Garza, launched an online petition so that others could voice their opinions. Today, we garnered three thousand votes, or, I'm sorry, three thousand signatures. Um, this was just posted on Friday, so I'm sure there's many more to come. Please, thank you for considering the request, and thank you for, for listening. If nothing else, it speaks that these middle school students are here, still here, just to hold these posters. They've been here since 5:30. Thank you.
Helen Zubalay, followed by Wes Johnson and Margaret Ponick.
Good evening, members of the school board, Superintendent Garza, Ms. Reed, FCPS administrators, teachers, neighbors, and students. My name is Helen Zubalay, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak on behalf of the arts in Fairfax County, and specifically the position of theater arts specialist. I know that, for many reasons, items have to be cut from the 2014 to 2015 budget, and I am passionate about fighting for funding at the state level, which is another battle I will take on. But at this county and school board level, I would like to strongly advocate for leaving this position untouched. The theater arts specialist is a critical position that ensures continued success of theater and dance in middle and high schools. What I love about theater is that it is the one creative area in which anyone can participate. You don't have to be an actor. You don't have to be able to sing or dance. You can do makeup. You can do costumes. You can do props. You can design sets. You can do lighting, sound. It's open to everybody across the board, and I feel very passionate about it at Falls Church High School, the oldest non-renovated school in the county, and (laugh) the, also coincidentally, a majority-minority school? Minority-majority school, with almost half our students are Hispanic, but that's another subject. Um, I live next door to Martina Hone, which is why I support both, but Falls Church High School is a unique little school, and when I see that the one place that many students can come to to be safe, which is theater, we see the cutters. We see the people questioning their sexuality, questioning their gender, the parent, the people whose parents have died, committed suicide, who fit in nowhere else, and they come to theater. And I'm afraid that cutting or reducing to half this position is just a domino that will make it easier and easier to cut theater and the other arts in the county. We emphasize grades, achievement, test scores, rankings, advanced academics, honors, AP, IB, SATs, ACTs, and college plans so heavily that we must balance it with creative outlets for all students. Keep the theater arts specialist position intact. Our students need and deserve the opportunity. Thank you.
Wes Johnson, followed by Margaret Ponick and Scott Pufumi.
Hello. Thank you for hearing us all today. Uh, my name is Wes Johnson. I have, I'm an alumni of Fairfax County Public Schools. so if you don't like what I have to say, well, you have no one to blame but yourselves. I have three sons who have been going through the schools, two who have graduated, one who is currently a junior at Falls Church High School. And I would like to speak about the theater arts specialist, which, as I believe, is not just an important position, but a champion for not just the students, but for the teachers. Lee Strasberg, he was a great teacher. He once said that acting is our most personal of crafts. The makeup of a human being, his physical, mental, and emotional habits influences acting to a much greater extent than commonly recognized. So here's what I have to say on that. Acting is a practice. Putting ourselves into the skin, the lives, the troubles of other souls teaches us how to be human. It teaches our children how to be human, to feel empathy, to understand what it's truly like to walk in someone else's shoes in a world that is becoming more and more dehumanized every day. To teach acting and the arts in school is to open up a child to a world where they can express their thoughts, their feelings, their words, their emotions, bringing color and life into what would normally be for them an increasingly insular, black-and-white, by-the-numbers world. I come from Falls Church High School. And I went through the program there, the drama department. I began as a quiet, shy child. I know it's hard to believe. I had no social skills to speak of, but a great man by the name of George Robert Allen was my teacher. He was there for 20 years. He became my mentor, and eventually, he became my friend. He drew from within me and from all of those that I became friends with, friends for life, a desire for something more, something greater. He united the shy, the awkward, the oddballs, the misfits. We all became family, no matter the race, creed, color, gender. It doesn't matter. We all became one. These otherwise lost children, of whom I'm one of, became film, stage, and TV actors. I have head costume designer for the Met in New York City, fine artists, graphic designers, writers, government workers, advertisers, presidents of major corporations, policemen, teachers themselves, because they wanted to give back, even as I am the voice of the Washington Capitals. We all went out and became what we wanted to. In short, anything we wanted to be, because we believed in ourselves, and we didn't come into that school with that ability. It was given to us by our teachers. And what did those teachers have? They had support. They had someone who believed in them. They had the theater arts specialist. And to the students of this county, Judy Bounds has been that friend, a supporter, a champion, and a necessity for the arts long enough to help create institutions like the Cappys, to put in place the quality individuals who have helped our children do more than simply learn. They've helped them thrive. My son, the one that's in school right now, straight A since middle school, and he loves his education, and he wouldn't give it up for anything, but he lives for the arts. My middle son, who just graduated from college, he was an IEP student in Fairfax County Public Schools and was told in grade school that he would not be able to memorize, to remember things, and maybe he should get a blue-collar job somewhere. But because of the teacher, Reed Mieszewski, at Falls Church High School, he was able to become the star of plays, to go out and memorize entire sonnets, to go up and do Shakespeare on the stage and move some people to tears. He was able to do this because there were people who believed in him, and Judy Bounds has helped keep it all together for those students, for those teachers, for us. She's incredibly important, and you can't put a price on that. Thank you very much.
Margaret Panik, followed by Scott Perfumi.
Wow, I'm really sad that I signed up when I did to have to follow that. That's awesome. My name is Margaret Panik. I'm vice president of the Fairfax County Federation of Teachers. I speak in support of Dr. Garza's budget. Why? Because it's the best we can do with what the county gave us. Would I like to see employees get a step and a cost-of-living adjustment? Of course. I'd also like to see changes to how we pay our instructional assistants, awarding salary credit for education, but the money just isn't there. It's not about whether or not it's a priority. It's actually about having the money to do so. And that money just doesn't exist right now. So how do you reward employees? You do your best to restore what they've lost and find other ways to show how they are valued. Take the support staff that I represent. FCPS asks teachers to take a climate survey to see how the staff feels about the school in which they work. But it's for teachers only. Support staff, whose opinion should matter, are not included. They only ask teachers. In this case, simply by being included in the survey and subsequent work afterwards makes a person feel valued and respected. Fairfax County Federation of Teachers has worked persistently to convey this message to FCPS. And finally, support staff will be included in this important task. FCFT would like to thank FCPS for including support staff on the training school training teams this year. Sorry, I'm a little tired. Here's another way to show value. Fairfax County Federation of Teachers has suggested making transfer more inclusive rather than exclusive. This yearly event is for teachers only. Teachers who are interested in switching schools can interview with prospective principals, all under one roof at the same time. Paraprofessionals, who are just as important to student achievement, are not permitted to attend. FCFT has made a request that changes be made and paraprofessionals be able to attend this event. This makes assistants feel that they are an important asset to FCPS. This school board is challenged to continue to do more with less. I urge you to continue to find areas to show employees that they're valued and finally, support this budget. Thank you.
Scott Perfumi, followed by Stephen Greenberg.
Good evening, Dr. Garza, Chairman, School Board. My name is Scott Perfumi, and I'm a theater teacher and a proud member of the Theater Arts Directors Association of Fairfax County Public Schools. This is my 19th year working in FCPS, having served every grade level, K through 12, as a theater teacher and a director. Over this near-two-decade tenure, I had the unique opportunity to build theater programs, produce high-quality productions, teach theater history and contemporary practices in the performing arts, bring in professionals for hands-on workshops in technical theater and acting styles, and take life-changing field trips to the theater cities of New York, Chicago, and Washington, D.C. I was able to do all of this because of the outstanding support I have received from my administrations, my student and parent communities, and the advice and guidance from the Fine Arts Office. When I first came to Fairfax County in 1995, a proud graduate of Virginia Tech, I knew then that we had a very good reputation within the Commonwealth of arts education in our public schools. It's why I moved here, to be a part of that legacy. Within my first two years in FCPS, the position of the theater arts resource specialist was created and has since been filled by the incomparable Judy Bounds, herself a lifelong educator in this county since 1970. Mrs. Bounds has set the standard for the position of the theater specialist, which started out as a part-time position. Within a few years, she was able to turn it into a full-time position within the Fine Arts Office, and it has remained so now for the last 10 years. Theater should be treated no differently than any other fine arts discipline, band, orchestra, choral, visual arts. They all have full-time advocates and specialists to serve their teacher communities. Even with all of our pending budget cuts for the 2015-15 school year, we should not be cutting an integral central office performing arts position. It sends a very poor message to our greater good that we do not value the vision, the voice, and the mission of theater in our schools. I stand before you today, not as an individual, fighting for one person's job. Rather, I stand before you today representing a large community of people, fighting for a position to be held as a full-time administrative role within our Fine Arts Office. We, the theater and dance teachers, along with our parent and student community, we implore you to understand the repercussion that comes with cutting one of the most important jobs in the fine arts pyramid. This act of cutting the position to half-time sends a scary message that more cuts of the arts are coming. Theater and dance teachers need a voice and an advocate at the big table. This person should be someone from our ranks, someone who knows the classroom and knows the stage, someone who sees the perspective of all arts education from every side, from the teacher to the administrator and back to what is best for students. And so, what is best for our students? The portrait of a 21st-century scholar. Creativity and risk-taking come to mind first. Be the role models for our students. Take a risk and be creative. And I know you will find the funding you need to make the theater specialist position remain full-time now and beyond. Thank you.
Number 79, Stephen Greenberg.
You tired dartboards. My name is Steve Greenberg, President of the Fairfax County Federation of Teachers. I come before you this evening representing 4,500 of the best educators in this country in regards to the advertised budget. Our organization continues to stand with our incredibly competent superintendent. I got a little tired tonight of listening to people come up here and give her compliments and then back off. Quote, "As FCPS employees, please know that we support Dr. Garza's advertised budget and the delayed step. We expect further compensation increases to be in next year's budget as well as actions taken now to decrease our workload." Does that sound familiar to you guys? It should. Your inboxes have been testifying over the past few days. Here's what all those emails are saying to you. The majority of your employees value how hard you tried for them. They appreciate the eight months of never being home with your families and hundreds of hours of meetings that you've attended to advocate for getting us the money we need for our school system and for our students. We appreciate that you brought credibility and passion to the fight. Your employees are not ungrateful. Your employees are not unappreciative. Your employees are smart, professional, and as dedicated as any in the world. Your employees have seen the changes that have occurred since Dr. Garza arrived, and we have hope. Your employees understand. Their president understands. We have been with you step by step through this as well. Do we want and deserve four steps and a 14% market scale adjustment and a lower class size to make up for being undercompensated for five years? Absolutely. However, we can't have that. We can't have it because we've been underfunded by our friggin' county supervisors for five years. Not because you don't care or wouldn't be willing to provide it. We will educate those supervisors and their communities further over the next year and promote the meals tax, which we'll be doing soon. We do not want more de-staffs or RISs. We do not want class size raised any further. We do not want any other student programs or electives cut. Our students and teachers are stressed enough. No more. We appreciate that you're working with us to provide better protections. Time is money. If you don't have money, then we appreciate that you will value our time. That's the bounce. You knew it was coming. You better know I signed up last on purpose. You will leave here tonight complimented and with your heads held high. You deserve no less. I will lead. I told you all publicly right after your election and several times since that you will be the greatest school board in the history of FCPS. You are still right on track. You secured the best superintendent in the country, started us back on track, receiving regular step increases, added teacher workdays, made auditing improvements, reformed discipline, and will soon fix elementary planning, later high school start times, and problems with our school calendar. You will also soon do more to really help our minority students with better achievement and to improve the climate for your employees. You all rock. Thank you. Whatever happens is, you address the budget over the next few weeks. Remember this: don't make it personal. You guys stay together respectful. We need you together after this to do important work and stay on track. We are all on the same team, and our team is formidable. Cinderella is off to the ball, as promised. Thank you for your time and your service to this school system. Good night.
Before I turn this back over to Chairman Moon, is there anybody that had signed up earlier that we missed that came in late? Okay, and I'll turn that over to Chairman Moon, and he'll describe the process.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Reed. We have five additional speakers who have signed up tonight. Let me read the names of those five speakers. The first one is Marcia St. John, to be followed by Georgie Basera, Daniel Wurz, Will Tench, and Heather Marsher. Marcia St. John.
Good evening. That's a really hard act to follow, and I feel really bad that he felt he was the last one to speak. I actually almost didn't want to come up here and stand up here to speak after I heard all those students. They were awesome, and I really applaud all that they did. The ones that are still here and the ones that are gone, they were just a really hard act to follow as well. I'm a really strong advocate of the arts, so I just want to do a shout-out for them. I have three daughters, two that have gone through the Fairfax County school system, one that is still in the Fairfax County school system. I always, through elementary school, all through high school, the arts have been the passion for my daughters. One of our elementary school music teachers has a ring that was given to her by my three daughters, and it says, "To our musical mother." And I really can't support the arts enough, so I stand here supporting them. One of the theater mothers of one of my daughters is here, Ms. Lubowitz, and her theater dad, Mr. Rapogol, at the Fairfax Academy. So I stand here supporting the arts as well. My heart goes out to all the teachers that spoke tonight. I know that there is not a person in this audience that does not have a teacher to thank for where they are today. I know that I am in the Washington, D.C. area because of a speech and drama teacher. I also want to thank all of you for your tireless work. Many of you know that I have been to many meetings and have also been to the Board of Supervisors asking for full funding for the school system, how they can say that they can support our school system yet not fully funded. I have a difficult time wrapping my mind around. There were a lot of good programs that were brought up today. I don't envy your position. I think you all need the wisdom of Solomon to figure this out. And I am here to put another issue on your plate. So I am here representing the families that I serve in the Bucknell Elementary Community. I represent the parents, the students, and the members in our community. On their behalf, I am urging you to consider the severe negative impact of the de-staffing of our office assisting position from a full-time to a part-time position and to reinstate it to a full-time position. Bucknell Elementary is one of only three schools that has a minimum office staff consisting of an administrative assistant, a registrar, and an office assistant. Our office assistant is the first person in our office that all of our parents and community members see when they walk into our school. As it happens, that person is also our only Spanish-speaking person in the front office. The critical nature of the skill cannot be emphasized enough by those who come into the school and who call, oh my goodness, and who need to have communication on a 24/7 basis. To limit that position to a part-time position indicates that those needs only require to be addressed on a part-time basis. Nothing could be further from the truth where the student population is 62% Hispanic. In and of itself, this is a compelling reason to fund the office assisting position as a full-time position. However, that position also is primarily responsible for allowing entrance into our building. Not having that position on a full-time basis begs the question of what our security measures could potentially degrade to. I don't have time to mention all the other clerical work that she does. You can read that later. But to the extent that there are only three schools in the entire FCPS system that are similarly impacted, we strongly urge you to consider how devastating such a cut would be to those communities. The cost to reinstate the office assistant position to a full-time basis in those three schools would amount to approximately $45,000 a year and would establish a bare-bones minimum in office staffing requirement throughout the county. Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Georgie Basera, to be followed by Daniel Wurz and Will Tench.
Good evening, all. Speaking as an individual resident tonight, I won't be speaking on behalf of any organization. I'll represent, as the Chair of MSAOC, the Minority Student Achievement Oversight Committee on June 2, where I have definitely two hours to have some good fun with you all. Wanted to talk about, first of all, about fully funding our pay raise for our teachers. You're asking, how will we do this? Again, I think you've already heard it tonight. AP test fees, $4.3 million. $5.5 million for the FLESS program. $1.7 million is out of what Dr. Garza says with the delayed step she can find. Another avenue to throw out is the earmarked money on your advertised budget. The only amendment that went through was for the transportation cost, the extra, if there is, transportation cost, to look at that as funding for this year. I'm not saying I do not support later start times, but in terms of this year's money, it's already also line out a budget for next year's 2016, as presented by Ms. Quinn in last week's presentation. Other things that could be... What I'm really interested is your compensation. Kind of a majority of your budget's compensation, like 89%. Dr. Garza said many times over the last couple of months, other districts are 85%. So we're talking about a 3% to 4% there, difference of where you're going to reduce costs in the next couple of years, which is about $75 to $80 million. I have to assume it's essentially... I have to assume it's at central staff office. And it has to be, unless you can do classroom teachers, which I think then the peasants will rush the castle, and that might be an ugly scene around here. But at any day, I don't think you're going to stay past four years because your abilities that I've seen are tremendous, and you're just a rocket in this nation. I think that you're going to be doing better things than here in Fairfax County. Another aspect I'd like to talk about as just an individual, another observation is how do I register in my mind the difference of one teacher association advocating for full step, FEA, and the other not? You know, I think the message here is that I need both associations to get together because then the message you send to the Board of Supervisors is they're not really breaking, so why are we going to fund them? Because they do listen to this, they do hear this. They advocate about both associations. So we're doing a disservice there. We need to come together in terms of teacher associations, which you guys negate each other right now. Other aspect is, I think the good news is that both associations are going to get their raises next year. I just have to believe that. Election year, I think you guys are going to do it. I think Dr. Garza is going to do it because it's going to be easier for her third year and fourth year as a board. You don't want another mix-up, mixture of new school board with things you already implemented your first two years. Other things, also election year, Ms. Strauss, Strangsville's going to be hard. You heard all them McLean folks. You heard your teacher raises this year. I think you have educated citizenry. They're going to know it's your historical voting pattern compared to one year. Last thing about is your school board. I heard many times that you guys are policymakers. I would advocate that you guys, like other districts, you have their school board members, is they come quarterly, twice a year. They go into the schools and see what teachers do, except for Ms. Hines, obviously as a teacher. But everyone else are quote-unquote policymakers, are not educators by trade. Thank you.
The next speaker is Danielle Wertz, to be followed by Will Tinch and Heather Marshall.
Hi, my name is Danielle Wertz. I am an alumni from McLean High School. I'm currently double majoring in neurologic music therapy and jazz vocal performance at the University of Miami's Frost School of Music. I'm speaking tonight in reference to the de-staffing of Linda Martin and the efforts to get rid of the advanced choral ensembles at McLean. When it comes to the performing arts, numbers are not a valid measure of importance. At University of Miami, the top jazz vocal ensemble has only six vocalists. The ensemble below that has only 12 vocalists. Madrigals, in case you are not aware, has anywhere between 16 and 18 vocalists. In the case of vocal ensembles, the smaller the size of the ensemble, the more challenging the ensemble is for the musicians. The high level of musicianship required to be in Madrigals is a major reason why I received a scholarship to Miami. A common misconception about musicians is that we are so talented. Talented people do not receive music scholarships. Great musicians do, and educated musicians do. It takes... It is thanks to our music educators and the advanced ensembles that we partake in in high school and middle school that we have become good enough musicians to deserve these scholarships. To those who want to pursue music after high school, Madrigals and advanced ensembles are like AP academic courses to us. Would you be willing to take AP US or AP Government away from a student who wants to pursue history or is passionate about history? Would you be willing to take away AP Biology and AP Chemistry from someone who's really passionate about science? If your answer is no, I would hope you wouldn't take advanced music ensembles away from musicians or others. Thank you for your time.
Will Tinch, to be followed by Heather Marshall.
Good evening, Dr. Garza, Chairman Moon, members of the board. Thanks for taking time to hear me. I'm here tonight to speak on two separate issues. I'm here to urge you not to cut the theater arts specialist position to halftime. I'm not going to reiterate all the comments that preceded me this evening. However, I would like to make special note of how articulate our young speakers have been tonight. I wonder where children gain such confidence, such public speaking ability, such stage presence. Who lights the fire in these children? Who develops the lifelong relationships with these children? Who inspires them? What teachers have the continuity from year to year to really develop meaningful relationships with these students? The arts teachers are usually the only teachers that stay with the students throughout their career. Here at LJ, there's two teachers that my daughter will have for her entire time. Michael Harrison as the band director and Ms. Stacy as the theater teacher, drama coach. So these teachers need our support. As a parent of two Fairfax County students, as the husband of a Fairfax County teacher, as a former teacher, we need to give these teachers our support. Judy Bounds, our theater arts coordinator, has given 30 years of service to this county. The fact that we're even considering making her position part-time is appalling. We should be embarrassed. I understand that financial decisions must be made. However, money must not and cannot be the ultimate consideration. If the teachers in this county begin to make money their primary consideration, we're not going to have any more teachers. Had Judy put money at the forefront of her decision-making, she would never have been an employee of Fairfax County. Let's show her the respect and gratitude that she has earned with her 30 years of service. Don't reduce her position to halftime as she sunsets on her career. On a different note, we cannot eliminate the early release days on Mondays at the elementary level. New assessment requirements at the elementary level are absurd and require an extraordinary amount of time. My wife is required to assess each child in eight different areas. As a general music teacher, she teaches every child in the school. That's almost 400 children. So every quarter, she has to write 3,200 grades per quarter. At the end of the year, she has to do fourth quarter and yearly grades, so approximately 6,400 assessments have to be done at the end of the year. That's 16,000 recorded report card grades for the year. She has to provide assessments in eight content areas for a kindergartner that she sees less than an hour a week. Couple that with a poorly-written, clunky grading program, and it's a wonder that she hasn't quit already. I thank you for your time and attention this evening. I'll see you around. Thank you.
Heather Marshall.
Thank you to the board for having us here tonight. Thank you for everyone who stayed. Wow, I've got a crowd still. My name is Heather Marshall. I'm a parent at Bucknell Elementary School. And we are actually new to the area, so I can't speak to a lot of these issues, but I am super excited to be attending my first board meeting and to see what's going on in the area. My family moved to South Alexandria. Basically, we found our house on the internet. It was one of four that we could afford. And we have loved the area. It's very diverse. We are a diverse family and could not have picked a better location. I'm a homeschool mom, so I did not consider much about the schools when I moved to the area. But quickly, my kids started making friends in the neighborhood, and they asked me if they could go to their house. And like any good mother, I said, "No, no way. I don't know their parents. You, of course, cannot go to their house." So I started going to neighbors' houses to get to know them. And what I realized is that we couldn't communicate. My neighbors, most of them, do not speak English. The kids do great, which is commendable to all their teachers and to you all. The parents, most of them, I could not communicate with. And so my husband and I really started contemplating, "Wow, are we going to be isolated?" You know, we're living in a townhouse. We see all these kids, but are we really isolating ourselves and our kids by homeschooling? And so we prayed, and we wrestled with it, and we decided to interview our school. I was terrified. Our school is a Title I school. I read for the first time in January what Title I means. I'm a homeschool parent, okay? I trust myself. So I started reading all these things, and, "Oh, my gosh, what am I doing? Am I making the right choice?" But I went to the school, and I met Paula. Marcia talked about Paula. She's the bilingual front desk secretary. And immediately, I realized that Paula and the staff members of the school had what I needed to become a part of my community. And I saw Paula answering the phones. You know, one second she's speaking English, the next one Spanish. I'm like, "I've got to get lessons, okay? How do I... How do we integrate?" And it was really wonderful. So we did the whole interview. We shook hands, we got to know the teachers. And my husband and I both left saying, "This is the village we want. This is the village we want, helping us raise our kids." And we knew. We knew Bucknell, you know, throw out the number three on the internet, that is garbage. This is the most diverse, wonderful group of people. And anyone who takes their kids out of that area because of those scores is truly missing out. And so anyway, Paula has given me some friendships that would not have been possible because she has connected that barrier. And I... How do you tell a parent, you know, "If your kid's sick, well, you can only call in the afternoons because Paula's the only one that can speak your language." Like, you can't do that, you know? And I made papoosas with my neighbor because these ladies helped me bridge that gap. I made papoosas. Like, that's ridiculous, okay? So anyway, I think you can see, when you have 62% of the population speaking Spanish, you've got to keep Paula. You just have to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes my list. But before I close the public hearing, let me read up the names of those who were not in when their names were called earlier in the evening. Number four, Taj Rouch. Marie Brandocky. Nikki Lee. Kareem Dumar. Aiden Behringer. Matthew Howard. Wolf Glick. Alex Glassman. Caitlin Schenbert. Heather Davies. Kenny George. Mukur Gupta. John Williams. Michael Dennis. Shurice Glassman. For the public, and just as a reminder to my colleagues, let me give you a few dates of importance. We have a work session Thursday night, May 15, starting at 7 o'clock here at Luther Jackson. Those of you who know that, you know, that you are going to be bringing amendments, please bring those amendments to share with the board members on Thursday night. All the amendments are due by the close of business the next day, May 16. We'll finalize the language of the amendments over the weekend and throughout Monday. And we are planning to post all the amendments by the end of the day on Monday, May 19, with the budget adoption to be done on May 22. So with that, I want to thank all those who came out this evening to speak. If there's anyone who wants to speak. For those who did not show this evening, it's your last opportunity. One, two, three, and gone. Public hearing is closed.